Good evening and welcome to the Bellingham City Council Regular Meeting. Today is Monday, October 3rd, 2022. I first want to welcome everyone and go through a couple of housekeeping items. If you need to get up or leave the chambers any part while the meeting's in session, we'd ask that you please use the back doors, just along the hallway, and keep the front door closed. In addition, there are restrooms available on the first floor, public restrooms. The men's room is around to the right, and the women's room is around to the left as you go down to the main lobby. And I also wanted to make note for the public that, as far as viewing options, we do have a hybrid meeting set up. So obviously, the full council is here in person, as are many of you this evening, so welcome. In addition, we still have the ability for members of the public to view what's being streamed live via the city's website, so you can access that link on the meeting's website. In addition, our city's YouTube channel is streaming the meeting as well through the BTV, that BTV link. In addition, meetings are also broadcast in high-definition on BTV on Comcast Channel 321 and in standard definition on Comcast Channel 10. And so I just wanted to make that known to members of the public because technically we're using the Zoom link, which is still available, and that access link is in the packet. That's going to be published before each meeting. But that link's primarily going to be used for members of the public and presenters who are joining us remotely and intending to speak. So this evening, we have three public hearings, and so members of the public wishing to speak as a part of that hearing will be able to do so here in person or through the remote link. But your viewing experience, I understand from BTV, will be much better if you utilize one of the streaming services or through the Comcast stations versus the Zoom connection because we, the council, are in a little box on Zoom. So you see the entire chambers, but not necessarily very clearly. So I just wanted to highlight that option for everyone. And then I'm officially calling the meeting to order and going to begin with announcements and upcoming meetings. So Bellingham City Council meets all requirements of the State of Washington Open Meetings Act. The 2022 Budget Work Session meetings will take place from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. at City Hall on the following dates and are open to the public to listen. So today, October 3rd, 2022, we have the introduction during Committee of the Whole this afternoon here in council chambers. But on the following weeks, on Mondays, again, from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m., we will also be meeting with specific presentations related to the budget. So on October 10th, 2022, that will be next Monday, there will be presentations from Fire and Library. The following Monday, October 17th, 2022, there will be presentations from Public Works, Parks, and Capital. Then on October 24th, 2022, there will be presentations from Human Resources, Finance, Legal, and IT. October 31st, 2022, there will be presentations from Police, Planning, and the Museum. And on November 7th, 2022, there will be presentations from the Mayor, Council, and Municipal Court. So again, that will take us through the month of October and beginning of November. Then on October 24th, 2022, at 7:00 p.m., the Bellingham City Council will hold the first budget public hearing. Then the second hearing will be held on November 7th, 2022, at 7:00 p.m. At this time, I'm going to turn to our deputy clerk, Kelly Getz, for roll call.
Hannah Stone?
Here.
Holly Huthman?
Here.
Dan Hamel?
Here.
Skip Williams?
Here.
Lisa Anderson?
Here.
Michael Lilliquist?
Here.
And Christina Michelle Martins?
Here.
All council members are present.
Thank you very much. So as I mentioned, this evening, we have three public hearings. The first public hearing is Agenda Bill 23463. This is a public hearing and resolution on the proposed relinquishment of a surplus utility easement encumbering 1752 Old Samish Road. So the attached resolution, which is in the packet, provides for the relinquishment of a surplus utility easement that encumbers real property known as 1752 Old Samish Road. The proposed relinquishment comes to City Council for decision upon application of the property owner to facilitate development of private property. The Public Works Department has reviewed the request and determined that the portion of the easement that encumbers the subject property is surplus to the city's needs and is not needed for utility service. Accordingly, staff recommends that it be relinquished. And for this item, I'm first going to turn to the Public Works Director, Eric Johnston.
Thank you, President Stone. Public Works is recommending relinquishment of this utility easement. The right-of-way was vacated in the 1980s by the City Council, and we recommend that you conduct the public hearing and then authorize the resolution to relinquish the utility
With respect, so I will open up the public hearing first, and then we'll return to council for discussion. Do we have any members signed up?
We have no members of the public that have signed up in person.
Are there any members of the public who are joining us this evening here in chambers who wish to speak to this item? So again, you can go to the microphone and state your full name for the record, and then you will have three minutes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
My name's Todd Ligastee, and I live in Bellingham. So as the city considers utility easement relinquishments, I hope you'll allow this tangentially-related testimony, especially since public comment is curtailed right now. Todd Ligastee here is a private citizen. I want to address the planning issue of what the city is getting for giving up all these rights of ways in utility easements. The city works hand-in-hand with developers to ensure that a profit is made, but doesn't approach it as how we can benefit the public through right-of-way vacations or utility easements. There are no affordable housing units being required in exchange for the city relinquishing this utility easement. There were no affordable housing units required from the developer when the city vacated the Douglas Street right-of-way. Yet the developer was able to increase the number of units because of the city's vacated right-of-way. The vacation impacted a beloved neighborhood trail, and even the hearing examiner recognized the stickiness of the situation by making no recommendation. This left the city in a strong position to negotiate for affordable units, but you didn't. If it's a matter of laws, then use your lobbyists to change the laws. I know if any of you called your state senator or rep that they would take your call. But instead, we increase a regressive sales tax for low-income housing while extending an eight-year tax exemption for luxury apartments on Samish Way. The city hires high-priced law firms from Seattle to negotiate against its employees. The city treats its employees as a cost and a burden while saying they are the most valuable asset. Maybe people expect that from politicians, doublespeak and being two-faced. I don't. I expect better. The city took concessions from its Public Works workers in 2021, the same year it gave double-digit raises to the executive-level staff. That seems just like a Wall Street maneuver. I'm not here to ask you to change how you treat your employees. Please continue to tell them and the public how much you appreciate them while spending $340,000 to fight a dead firefighter's cancer claim to deny his widow his pension. That's straight-up evil in most people's books. But please continue, as long as you treat the developers the same. I'm only here to ask for consistency. Start treating developers like you treat your employees. Hire lawyers to negotiate against them. Get the Association of Washington Cities to testify against developers, just like they do against firefighter cancer coverage, and you pay them to do it. If you truly want affordable housing, then start by using the means available to you. If there isn't, then make laws so you can take some of the developer profit, or better yet, get affordable housing. We heard Councilmember Hamel talk this afternoon about the need to raise taxes to provide affordable housing. But maybe first, you should stop giving tax exemptions to developers for luxury apartments and stop giving utility easements away without requiring affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Todd. Are there any other members of this public who wish to speak to this topic? So again, regarding the relinquishment on Samish. Okay. Not seeing any hands in chambers. Are there any members of the public joining us remotely who would like to speak? If so, you can raise your hand using the Raise Hand feature at the bottom of your screen, or if you're joining us by phone, you can use *9 to raise your hand. No? Okay. Seeing no further speakers signed up, I will close the public hearing and return to council for discussion. Councilmember Hamel?
Move approval.
Motion's been made by Councilmember Hamel and a second by Councilmember Williams. Any discussion? Okay. Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Okay. Seeing none, that passes 7-0. Staff need anything further? No? Okay. So the next public hearing this evening is Agenda Bill 23464. This is a public hearing on a proposed resolution of the City of Bellingham, Washington, encouraging voters to vote yes on Watcomb County Proposition 2022-6, regular property tax levy for emergency medical services in the general election to be held November 8th, 2022. City Council will hold a public hearing this evening on a proposed resolution encouraging voters to vote yes on Watcomb County Proposition 2022-6, regular property tax levy for emergency medical services at the general election to be held on November 8th, 2022. The levy would provide for the continuation of a county-wide regular property tax levy of not more than 29.5 cents per $1,000 assessed valuation each year for a period of six consecutive years, commencing January 1st, 2023, and ending December 31st, 2028, to provide stable and long-term funding for countywide emergency medical services. And to begin this evening, I'm going to turn to Councilmember Lilliquist.
Thank you. The reason why I asked for this resolution in part is because I serve on the EMS Advisory Board along with county officials, mayors of the small city, and Fire District Commissioners. And it's our job to kind of oversee from a policy basis the EMS system. And so it naturally came to the EOB, EMS Advisory Oversight Board, to consider approval of the levy, and we did that. We approved the levy plan and the idea of going to levy, and then it was officially placed on the ballot by the county council because EMS is a county-wide system and will be up for a vote for renewal by all the voters in Watcomb County. We have one unique opportunity as elected officials to use our position to speak to an issue on the ballot. This is our one and only opportunity. After that, we're not supposed to use any city resources or any part of our official position to lobby for or against the EMS renewal. So this is our moment to pass a resolution to let the public know what the city council's thinking, and I hope the rest of the city council will join me in supporting the resolution. As city officials, I draw our attention to a particular line here in the resolution, which indicates that if the EMS levy fails, the city, Bellingham itself, will experience significant funding shortfall and either have to reduce EMS services or reallocate funding from other important city services to maintain the current EMS level. We are a funding partner in the EMS system, although minority partner, but without the EMS levy, we'll have to adjust. To the voters, I would remind you that the EMS system saves lives. We have come to expect and we deserve prompt-effective medical service from well-equipped and well-trained professionals, and the EMS levy is critical for keeping service levels high and respond to a growing county. For example, to accommodate growth, a fifth EMS unit is needed, likely to be based in Linden, to better serve our neighbors in eastern and northern parts of the county. The proposed levy renewal is not a surprise. It has been the plan all along. The plan was to build up the system, build up a healthy financial reserve, and then when the time comes, continue the levy. Voters are being asked to what amounts to about a $50 annual increase for someone who owns a $500,000 home, so for the proverbial price of a cup of coffee a month, we can continue to save lives. I hope you'll consider supporting this levy after we hear from the public for this public hearing.
Thank you, Councilmember Lilliquist. Chief Hewitt, did you have anything to add before we open the hearing?
No, this was a council-generated item. I'm just here if there are any specific questions that I might be able to answer about.
Thank you, Chief Hewitt. So at this time, I'll open the public hearing and first turn to members of the public who've joined us in chambers this evening. Is there anyone signed up for this hearing? You can use the microphone right there at the top of the stairs, or you're welcome to come all the way down, whatever you prefer.
Thank you.
You'll need to press, there's a little button to turn it on.
And the red light is glowing. My name is Jim Larison. I live in Bellingham. I thought it was pretty intre, I'm speaking extemporaneously, and I see I have three minutes, but the councilmen got however much time they wanted to trot this idea out. I really don't under, I didn't even know this was on the agenda for tonight. And three hours ago, I opened up my assessment for next year, my tax assessment as a property owner, a 38% increase. Every year for 20 years, we've listened to these, "Oh, for the price of a $5 cup of coffee a month, we can afford this, we can afford that, we can afford this other thing." Meanwhile, my taxes now almost equal what my mortgage payment was 20 years ago, just my taxes. I don't understand why the council, I can understand that somebody would propose yet another property tax levied on top of lots of other property taxes. I can understand somebody would propose that. But why would the city council go on record as being anti-neighborhood, anti-taxpayer, anti-property owner with such a resolution to encourage people to yet pay more taxes? I agree EMS is something we need, and we are a minority payer of this system. And if we have to adjust the budget, come on, 38% increase in taxes. There is going to be a lot of money sloshing around yet again in this city that's currently So why would you go to a taxpayer again for another $5 cup of coffee a month, for another system, and add that on top of the burden that we property owners already face? There are people being forced out of their homes at the current rate, let alone to pay for this additional fee. It's time to start prioritizing and quit asking for property owners to pay for every idea somebody comes up with. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Members, so we haven't been in chambers for a while for public comment, but so we request to make sure that people feel free to share their opinions and comments on any side of a debate or a public hearing that we may be bringing forward. We ask that there not be any response from members of the gallery or in person, so jeering or booing on either side or cheering. So thank you for recognizing that. We want to make sure that everyone feels welcome to speak. Are there other members of the public this evening who'd like to speak to this topic? Okay. Seeing none, are there any members of the public joining us online who wish to speak? If so, you can raise your hand using the icon at the bottom of the page, at the bottom of the Zoom page, or if you are joining us by phone, you can press *9.
Trish Newbold?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. I would like to endorse my support for the speaker who just presented and say that I am not opposed to supporting the EMS needs or whatever, or for that matter, I'm not opposed, this is not on the agenda, I'm not opposed to supporting a new jail, for example, but I am opposed to new taxes. We are taxed very heavily on our property right now, and I feel like with the tax base growing, there is no need to increase taxes additionally on what property owners are already being taxed. And that's what I would like to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Trish. Are there other members of the public joining us remotely who wish to speak on this topic? Okay. Seeing no additional hands raised here in chambers or online, I will bring it back to council, close the public hearing. Councilmember Lilliquist?
Yeah, I'd like to respond to you directly, sir, and to the woman. Taxes in Washington State don't work the way most people think they work. In your, in your property valuation, there's a piece of paper from the county assessor that explains what's called budget-based taxation, that if everyone's property taxes go up, no one's, property, sorry, property values go up, no one's taxes go up. Under the Washington State system, when property values go up, the county assessor actually reduces the levy rate to bring in the same amount of money. So it's not true that when property values go up, the tax base grows. It's complicated. If you don't believe me, please go online, please research it yourself, please look at that insert from the county assessor. So if property values go up, say, 20% this year, the city does not see 20% more property tax revenue. We don't. We see like 1% or 2%, and that has to do with new construction, which does actually grow the tax base. So think about it. Property values, mine, has like doubled in the last decade, and I assure you, city governments are not, have double the money they used to have. That's just not how taxes work. So I understand tax sensitivity, and I really do. My property taxes are a stretch for me, but please realize that we're not going to be awash in money. Our tax base grows much more slowly than property values, but yes, this renewal does re-index the property tax, and it is actually a slight increase, but it's not like the 38% I think that you were citing. So that's an important thing to consider. This is a tax, I'm not going to sugarcoat that, but taxes work differently than I think most people realize. I sure as heck didn't know this until I got into office.
Are there comments from council members? Any other discussion? Okay. Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you. So a couple of months ago, when this came before city council, before county had done their final vote, I had voted no. And I knew that it would pass county and it would pass city, but my concern was, we've received an email where the county executive had stated that after reassessment, a lesser amount could have been asked for and still provide the services. And given the state of the economic outlook, we had a childcare levy coming forward, potentially we were going to have a climate levy coming forward, and then the EMS. And I do believe in our EMS system. Unfortunately, the way our taxation is in the state of Washington, we don't have income tax and other means in order to be able to generate these additional services. So a lot of times, levies are critically important to be able to fund the level of services our community needs, and I get that. Our climate levy got put on hold or sunsetted or put away, and one of the things my concern was, was that the city needs to find ways within our means to pay for the things that we really want as far as an initiative and coming forward in our future budget. The two climate positions that may have gone through the climate levy will be funded through the city's funds, and I'm pleased that we're putting our current budget towards the work that we need to do. But to be able to fund a county-wide EMS system, Bellingham might have a little more money than some communities like Linden and Everson and Ferndale where they would struggle, and it's really difficult living in a county of haves and haves-not. Bellingham has a lot. We provide a lot more services in depth than some of our smaller community can, and it's these kind of measures that are critically important. So even though I had voted no, because to me, it was more of a symbolic vote that I really want when we as leaders or as some of our advisory groups really kind of look at levies, that they really are judicial about what they bring forward to the voters and only ask for as much as we absolutely need. I felt like we could get by with, it wasn't a substantial amount, but it was a little bit less, and I'm hoping in the future, as we ask our citizens to vote for things that go on their property tax, which makes housing more difficult to afford, and even that $50, when I went and talked to some community members, that might be their Christmas money for their kids. So not everybody has the pockets to be able to afford these additional increases. But I kind of spoke a bit about what my concerns were, why I had originally voted no, but I also understand that this kind of funding is essential. I wish we had a different way to ask for funding. The EMS services saved my father-in-law's life when he had a heart attack, and I'll always be grateful for the system that we had in place because we received another 10 years of wonderful time with him. So I do support our firefighters, our EMS. We need to have the services funded at a level that our community needs. Lord hopes none of us in this room ever has to make that call, watching a loved one on the floor having a heart attack, but we're going to be pretty happy that we have a robust system around the county to be able to assist in those times of needs. So even though I have concerns about how much we're asking for, and I worry about going forward with the financial impacts of the escalating costs we're all experiencing, I will be voting to support this. I'm not necessarily flip-flopping. I did my vote to show my concern about ultimately the cost that this will be. I hope in the future, we're much more careful, even for those small margins, to only ask for what is absolutely needed, but I also want to make sure that the community and our fire department and our personnel who provide the services know that they have the resources needed to provide our community with these essential life-supporting services. So wanted to say my piece on that, given that I had voted no previously.
Comments from other council members?
I just wanted to mention, as far as my position, obviously, this is going before the voters, so on the ballot in November, voters will have the opportunity to vote yourself yes or no on this. I believe that the demand and the need is continuing to grow as far as for emergency medical services and that response, and public safety being of utmost importance and wanting to make sure that those departments and employees have the resources needed to respond to the need in our community, I feel like it's of vital importance, and so that's why we'll be supporting the vote. Anything else? Okay. If there's no further discussion, this time, we do have the resolution before us.
I guess I need to actually make an official motion to pass the resolution?
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilmember Lilliquist and a second by Councilmember Hamel. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Okay. Seeing none, that passes 7-0. The next item before us this afternoon is the third public, or this evening, is our third public hearing. This is Agenda Bill 23465. This is a public hearing to consider removal of on-street parking to install bike lanes for 2023 non-motorized projects. So the Bicycle Master Plan recommends installing bicycle infrastructure on Illinois, Meridian, Gerard, Cornwall, and Eldridge. Removal of on-street parking along these streets is needed to provide the physical space for bicycle lanes. Consistent with the policies and objectives contained in the Bicycle Master Plan, staff recommend removal of parking along these roadways to install bicycle infrastructure in summer of 2023. Since removal of on-street parking can present a conflict between individual property owner interests and citywide policy goals, the past practice has been for the city council to be the decision-maker following a public hearing. Staff recommendation is to conduct the public hearing and to consider a motion authorizing the removal of on-street parking as described in the staff memo. And for this item, I'll first turn to Director of Public Works, Eric Johnston.
Thank you, Council President Stone. Tonight, we have Chad Schollhauser, city engineer, Mr. Chris Como, transportation planner, and Riley Grant, who is our communications manager for the Public Works Department. All three of these folks have had a key part in bringing us here tonight with the information that we're sharing through this presentation. I will mention here that we are happy to be here for this public hearing as one of the parsons of the, one element of our gathering of public input into this process. There is a decision that the council needs to make related to policy issues, and those conflicts that we often see between individuals and the community goals as a whole are appropriate to rest at the city council level. We do occasionally, as staff, remove on-street parking from time to time, but these types of decisions at this magnitude, we do defer those to the city council following what we are able to do in terms of gathering public input and feedback. That public input and feedback comes through the development of the six-year tip. That public input and feedback comes through the development of the six-year tip, which is also subject to a public hearing and presentation to the Transportation Commission. In addition, as the last several months have progressed leading to this point, we've been able to gather a tremendous amount of input. I think there's several hundred individual comments that have been made related to the proposals on Eldridge, Illinois, Gerard, Cornwall, and the Guide Meridian. We're happy to have those. We welcome that. That's part of the public process. We were able to, in this case, send a couple of specific postcards to folks. Unfortunately, there was a bit of a snafu in that process, and we had anticipated having a return stamp on that, and there was a mistake with the printer, and that was not done. So we apologize for that oversight. That will be corrected in the future. But we have also created the Engage Bellingham website that folks were able to return comment. This decision is a city council decision. This is not a staff decision that we are making here tonight. This is our recommendation. We also want to communicate that the decision does not have to be all-in-one. Our recommendation is that council remove parking on all of these proposed locations, but that is not a black or white question. The council could choose to say yes to one street and not to others. Council could choose to say yes to everyone tonight or to some of them tonight, and we would welcome the opportunity to come back to talk about particular streets if the council would be so inclined. I will mention to that end that there are differences between a couple of the projects. The projects on Eldridge Avenue and on Cornwall are 100% city-funded. They do not have an outside funding source. The projects on Illinois and Gerard-Guide Meridian do have an outside funding from the state and federal government, and so there is an element of the project that was, the grant application that was submitted was assumed that we would be doing the proposed changes that were in the packet or the presentation tonight. So what I'm trying to communicate is we are open to a discussion about when and how and what. We don't want the council to feel like you have to make a decision tonight. All their recommendation is that you do. We are recommending particularly the Illinois's projects move forward as those are tied to the state and federal grants, and there's an element of timing pursuing those projects. So with that, I will turn it over to city engineer Chad Schollhauser and Chris Como to go through the presentation, and after that, we recommend you conduct the public hearing and consider the recommendation.
Thank you, Eric. Good evening, council. Chris and I are here to talk about the parking removal, as Eric kind of expressed. And just as quick background, there's no, you're not going to find in Bellingham Municipal Code that we need to do this in front of council. However, it's always been our past practice to talk about parking removal in front of council because there's a lot of factors that go into these decisions, and so we're looking for your decision-making body on this. The city follows established policies set by council, as you can see on the slide. The city's goals and policies regarding transportation are laid out in the Multimodal Transportation Chapter of the Comprehensive Plan, as well as other city documents that you have adopted or passed policy on. As a city, we've identified the primary bicycle and pedestrian networks through our bicycle and pedestrian master plans, and we're enhancing and providing connections to those networks by implementing those adopted plans. Our goal is to provide safe mobility and connectivity for people using all modes of travel, and our priority is people, and we also recognize that we must balance the mobility across the city. Much of our urban environment is built out, so space is limited in these already improved rights-of-way. In order to construct bicycle infrastructure as directed by policy, existing on-street parking needs to be removed from some of these corridors from time to time, and that's why we're here tonight. Designs are dictated by the available space working between the curbs. We aren't rebuilding roadways. We're basically rebalancing the infrastructure that we already have for all of these people. This guidance is from our adopted plans, like the Bicycle Master Plan, the Pedestrian Master Plan, the ADA Transition Plan, our Climate Action Plan, Strong Water Comprehensive Plan, Comprehensive Plan, any number of plans that we've already adopted, that you have already adopted as city policy. Go ahead, next slide, Chris. So as Eric already mentioned, the proposed parking removal is for three specific 2023 planned capital projects that are composed of five different street corridors. The Parkview Safe House to School project is Illinois Street east of Meridian and goes from Sunset Drive to Meridian, and this is funded, as Eric mentioned, by Safe House to School grant, which are federal dollars. The West Illinois Pedestrian and Bicycle Safety Project is Illinois Street west of Meridian and goes from Meridian to Lynn Street. This project also includes the Gerard and Meridian corridors and is state-funded with both a Transportation Improvement Board grant as well as a pedestrian and bicyclist program grant. And the Eldridge Avenue and Cornwall Avenue corridors are components of a larger non-motorized project, implementing capital projects called out in the Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plans and funded in whole by city local funds through the Transportation Fund. Chris will take us into the details of the parking removal proposed on all of these corridors, and the presentation and public hearing are specific to the parking removal needed to construct these proposed projects. We're not going into the details of the design at this point in time. We're looking for our parameters so that we can get forward with design on these. That's what the graphics are going to see are conceptual in nature. They're all planned to be designed, or excuse me, built and designed next year. We are planning in the first quarter of 2023, as we talked about at our Transportation Improvement Program public hearing this summer, to have an open house, an informational open house, and we'll be looking for input at that point as well. Just really quickly, Eric already covered this a little bit, but before Chris moves forward on the individual corridors, we as staff are recommending parking removal on all of these corridors, but it is not an all-or-nothing proposition. As Eric mentioned, our council is free to postpone this or ask us for more details on these projects, or pick them off one at a time and make their decision on that. So Chris, please take your way.
Thank you, Chad, and Eric, and hello, council. It's been a minute. It's good to be back. So here is West Illinois Street, and as Chad mentioned, this goes from Sunset to Lynn, but it's broken into two different projects. On the top of this graphic, you can see the existing condition on West Illinois Street, and there's parking shown here. Parking isn't lining each of the sides of the street. This is just to get a feel for what the space is allocated on the street. In the lower part of the graphic, you can see what it would look like if parking were removed on one side. This profile happens to be as if you were looking east along the corridor, so standing at Hagan looking back towards Sunset. I do want to point out that there's one piece of the Illinois corridor between Sunset and Cornwall where we're saying that parking should come off the south side rather than the north side of the street, and you'll see that in just a minute. I'm not going to read each of the percentages of parking utilization, but in this case, we counted and surveyed West Illinois on two different occasions. Here's the segment of Illinois that goes from Sunset over to Cornwall, and the graphic is showing parking removed on the south side. There are no driveways here. There's an alley, but there's homes up here with driveways, and so we're saying on this side of the street, this parking should remain, and then on the rest of the corridor, it will flip to the north. And here's what that looks like from Cornwall. And by the way, at Cornwall, we'll be extending the bike lanes up to the intersection. There will be green bike boxes here, and this corridor will have parking removed on the north side, or that's our recommendation anyway, and parking retained on the south side. This takes us to Valette Street, where we'll have a flashing crosswalk, and the Hagan store as we approach the intersection of Meridian and Illinois. There's a roundabout proposed here. Moving west from Meridian, we'll be looking to take, again, parking off the north side of the street and retaining it on the south side, getting us over to northwest, again, bicycle facilities. And from here, things change. From northwest, moving west toward Lynn Street, the street is not wide enough, and so we would have to take parking off of both sides of the street here to get bike lanes in here. And this takes us all the way to Lynn Street. This is the northern Columbia neighborhood here. Moving to Meridian Street, you can see in the top graphic the existing condition with parking shown on both sides, and in the lower graphic what it would look like if parking were removed from one side. And in this case, we'd be looking down the corridor south from Victor toward the Hagan store. We're recommending taking parking off the west side here and keeping it on the east side. Here's what that would look like, starting at east Victor. There's an existing flashing crosswalk here at Victor and Meridian. And moving down the corridor, this is how it would look with parking taken off the west side and retained on the east side. We are not taking or recommending parking removal on Meridian Street south of Illinois. That's the Fountain District Urban Village, and that master plan specifically says that parking is for supporting ground-floor retail businesses in the urban village. So this would result in shared lane markings on the roadway and skipping with bike lanes down to Gerard Street, beginning at Broadway, moving south. And again, for consistency, we're keeping the bike, I'm sorry, recommending parking removal along the southwest side and retaining it on the northeast side. This looks south along the corridor as well. Here's what that looks like from Broadway here in the upper graphic, moving down towards F Street and the Watcom Middle School campus here. And then coming into the downtown area, here's the municipal court area and the police station and the health department. Again, parking taken off the southwest side retained on the northeast side and coming around the corner and bringing the bike lanes into the downtown area. On Eldridge, in the top graphic, you can see the existing condition with parking available on both sides of the street. Much like the west end of Illinois, Eldridge is not wide enough. It's 36 feet, so in order to get bike lanes on Eldridge, parking would have to come off of both sides of the street, and that's what's shown in the lower graphic. We're also showing that there's a buffer here and a vertical element. We can talk more about that later. This is looking either way down the corridor because parking is removed on both sides, and this would go from Broadway all the way down to Niquolicum. And this is starting at Broadway, moving northwest up the corridor. You can see little vertical elements up here in the buffer bike lane. We did that just to try to give people an idea what that might look like with these vertical elements. Just going block by block, you can see some of the existing crosswalks and bus stops, and the bike lanes just continue all the way to Niquolicum and the Bellingham Technical College here. To give people an idea of what some of the crosswalk features on Eldridge might look like, here's two pictures here in Bellingham of two-lane roads with bike lanes that actually have flashing crosswalks. This is just to give people a reference point. If crosswalks or flashing crosswalks are going there, here are some examples of what that could look like. It's not exact replica, but Orlean Street at the Railroad Trail has this feature, as well as 11th Street at Taylor, where you walk down to the Taylor Dock. And then here's what the vertical element of the buffered bike lanes could look like. This is, again, not an exact replica of the situation, but this is what was done up in Cordada. We moved a mile and a half of lanes and put in the buffer-protected bike lanes here with these vertical delineators. Moving on to Cornwall Avenue down in the waterfront, the Bicycle Master Plan calls for bike lanes here. This is an interesting situation. We got 44 feet curb-to-curb, and this is a heavy freight truck route, designated freight truck route. And in order to get bike lanes in here, technically it could happen, but there's a bit of an issue with what we call multiple minimums, where there's greater risk to each user group when people are squeezed together. We're recommending taking parking off both sides to try and keep people safe and comfortable. That's what's shown in the lower graphic. Upper is the existing situation with truck traffic and parking on each side. Again, this is just a recommendation. As both Eric and Chad have said, the Bicycle Master Plan recommends bicycle facilities on all of these corridors, and we're simply trying to implement those plans. So that's pretty much it in terms of the profiles that we have here.
Chris, actually, could you back up for just a second before you go to the next slide? That graphic is basically showing a possibility. With parking removed along Cornwall, we would look at the best way in designing that, once we're given the parameters, the best way to connect this existing cycle track at the waterfront to the future Cornwall Beach Park. That could be a cycle track. It could be delineated bike lanes like shown here. It could be something else. So I just didn't want anybody to think that this is what we're moving forward with. So go ahead, next slide, Chris. And I apologize for the busyness on this slide, but if you'll indulge me for a moment, this is meant to show the connectivity of our existing bicycle and our proposed bicycle networks. With the completion of these projects, the proposed parking removal and then completion and construction of these projects next summer, a person would be able to get on their bike at Britton Road on the eastern, basically the eastern city limits at Lake Wacom, and ride in bike lanes or bike boulevards or some sort of bicycle-protected infrastructure, choosing the trail if they so desired, all the way to Eldridge Avenue. From there, you could choose to head west on the county into what the county has previously constructed along Marine Drive, which is millions of dollars of urban arterial infrastructure, including bike lanes. Or you could head downtown along our bike lanes, along Roder, into Chestnut in the downtown area, onto the cycle track at the waterfront, and then, like we've just talked about on Cornwall, connecting to the future Cornwall Beach Park, up into the South Bay Trail or into the Boulevard and into Fairhaven. So it's just meant to show the connectivity we're trying to achieve with these capital projects. Go ahead, Chris, next slide. And that's really all we have, is we're recommending, like I said, parking removal on all of these five corridors to implement these projects through previous policy, and we're here to answer questions either before or after the public hearing.
Great. Thank you very much. Any clarifying questions before we go to the public hearing? Councilmember Lillikwist?
So, Chris, these weren't really designs. They were like design ideas, but I want to ask about the pedestrian crossing aspect. So these are started and originated and are primarily bike projects. How many of these primarily bike projects include an increased number of pedestrian, marked pedestrian crossings? Is there an increased number, or are they just sort of the ones that exist are being enhanced? Has that aspect been kind of thought about yet? And what is the thinking?
Actually, most of the corridors have some crossing features. I'd say the exception would be Cornwall. But as an example, on Illinois, there's a crossing called for at Valette. There's an existing crosswalk, but that would be enhanced into a flashing crosswalk. In addition to the Safe House to School and Bike Ped Safety Grants, we got a TIB grant for the intersection at Meridian, Illinois, as well as some complete streets grant funding to fund some crosswalks. And further south on Meridian, we're going to put a flashing crosswalk at Meridian and West North Street, right in the middle of the Fountain District Urban Village. Then the crossings that are identified in the pedestrian master plan on Eldridge, I think there's one at Niquolicum and one at Lafayette, or maybe that one's from the ADA Plan. And then also on West Illinois, on the west side is a bike boulevard crossing of Illinois at Victor. Victor's already got markings for a bike boulevard.
Okay. Thanks, Kudrydow.
I just want to add to that really quickly. On the Safe House to School project up where we are actually kind of squaring off the Indiana-Cornwall intersection, we'll have another crossing there just south of Parkview Elementary School. And the crossings that Chris mentions on Eldridge, those are the minimums. Those are the ones that are recommended in the pedestrian master plan, the ADA Transition Plan, as well as the existing crossing at the park at Victor right now. Those are the minimums that we're going to there with. Once we know the parameters of that, the parking removal along Eldridge, we will start design and determine if there may be more crossings.
And one other thought on that is that the decision that's made tonight or in the future would not affect the construction of those crossings. So the ability to install the protected crossings is something that we would do as staff. The ability to install the bike lanes would require the removal of parking, but if the council chooses not to remove on-street parking, we would still proceed forward with the, as an example, Eldridge Avenue, at least two of those crossings. There would be impacts to some parking, but would not be substantial. So regardless of the decision, we will still be installing the protected crossings on Eldridge, on Illinois, and other locations.
Thank you for the clarification. So at this time, we will open the public hearing. Again, this public hearing is related to the consideration of removal of on-street parking to install bike lanes for the 2023 non-motorized projects, and this impacts Illinois, Meridian, Gerard, Cornwall, and Eldridge. So I first wanted to, I know that some members of the public signed up in advance, right? You were able to go online and register. So if you registered in advance online, separate from the signup sheet out front, we're going to go through those names first. Deputy Clerk Let Gets, do you have that list?
All right. I'm going to list three names, and if you guys can kind of queue up at the microphones, that would be great. But first up, we have Dale Whipple, followed by Lisa Keeler and Eric Arund. And we'll start with Dale. And we'll start with Dale.
Just asking you to state your full name for the record, and then you'll have three minutes.
I'm Dale Whipple, and I'm here to share a couple of concerns of some few destination areas, MacLeod Road and James Street. I find them both unsafe and hazardous, as many pedestrians, they're biking and walking up the stuff, so I just wanted to share that info tonight and then give the piece of paper to the mayor so that he can look it over and study those two locations between northwest and Meridian, and then between East Orchard Telegraph Row. Thanks.
Hi, good evening. My name is Lisa Keeler, K-E-E-L-E-R. I'm here in my private capacity. I am a resident of Bellingham, specifically West Illinois Street in the 500 block, and I am here to speak and ask that if the council approves the program or the project, that it do so relocating the parking on West Illinois from removal on the north side to removal on the south side. I do reside on the north side, again, in that 500 block. Between the 500 block or the 400 block, and because of Cornwall, Rose Garden, and the 800 block, there are no cross streets. There's no alley access. The only access to our properties are driveways, which we can use for our own personal parking. But for guests, especially those with mobility issues, there is no other place to safely access our properties other than parking on that north side of the street. It's certainly not within a reasonable distance. I do want to note that I don't think there was sufficient notice specifically to the impacted residents or homeowners, not simply because stamps were not included, but because the note cards that were sent out were received in the mail by many of us on September 2nd at the earliest, for a return date of September 5th, specifically inviting Comment at a September 13th Transportation Committee meeting. It was made clear at that committee meeting, well, it was stated at that committee meeting, that in fact, Comment was not invited for that meeting, but for tonight's meeting. After that meeting, I certainly did not feel welcome in providing Comment at committee meet, at committee meeting, committee meetings moving forward. I've raised those concerns with my council member and with the mayor. I would not be surprised that many of the folks who participated in that meeting felt that their comments were no longer welcome. Again, I read through all of the materials, the project information. There did not appear to be taken into consideration the differences in parking use between the east and west sides of Meridian, what houses have driveways or do not. Again, I live in a particular stretch that is very long, only has limited access, doesn't have any reasonable alternatives, and I'm simply asking that the city council take that into consideration so that there can be safe access for all, noting that I do not oppose the project. I think it's great to have better access. I will also note, as a pedestrian, when you put in marked crosswalks, drivers and cyclists tend to not obey unmarked crosswalks, something to keep in mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
Hello, my name is Eric Arndt. I live on Eldridge Avenue. The, I was pleased to see that on most of the roads that you were talking about removing parking, it was only on one side. That still leaves the possibility of the uses that we usually have for on-street parking available on those roads. On Eldridge, I see that the proposal is to remove parking on both sides. Today, those on-street parking are used for many uses, not just the folks who live there, but deliveries and, and workmen and other things. Imagine, if you will, we've all seen the Dord and Bodie trucks, the big blue box truck they drive around town delivering appliances in. Today, if they're doing that on Eldridge, they'll pull along the curb, park, unload the dishwasher, whatever they're installing, and take it into the house, and the truck stays there while they're working. If the parking is removed from both sides on Eldridge, the only legal ability for that truck to do is to park, stop in the middle of the travel lane, turn on its flashers, while it takes however long it takes to unload that appliance and take it into the house, and then come back and drive away, and hopefully find someplace to park that big box truck on a side street, most of which the parking is already full. The city's own traffic studies show that Eldridge has about 6,000 cars a day, 80% of which is during the, you know, seven to seven, that's 5,000 cars during the time when that Dord and Bodie truck might be parked there. That's 400 cars an hour. Imagine, if you will, 400, well, 200 going the same direction as the park stuck behind that, and then the only way to do is they'll have to poke and drive off into the oncoming traffic to go around that parked truck, because there is no place for delivery trucks or workmen. And it's not that we all have appliances being delivered every day, but we do have Amazon trucks and UPS and all of those throughout the course of the day. UPS, I know, has a policy not to pull into driveways, so they also will be parking in that, stopping in the middle of that traffic lane, backing up cars. The, if there's an option to, the trouble most of the folks on Eldridge have is speed of the traffic traveling on that, on that road. If this project went ahead, I suspect that speed issue is only going to be doubled, except for when there's a big truck parked in the middle of the traffic lane, because you'll have even more of a runway aspect visually at runway. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric.
All right. The next three we have is Dan McReeve, John Curl, and Jim Larison.
Thank you, council, for allowing me to speak this evening. My name's Daniel S. McReeve, and I have, I have a commercial office building on Gerard Street, Dean Gerard specifically, and I have a wheelchair ramp. So for handicapped access, my handicapped clients or people that need to visit my office access a wheelchair ramp on Gerard, and they need to pull up there and park and get in their wheelchair and come up the ramp. So I need, excuse me, I need parking for that. There, I have a garage, but a small garage that won't even fit a medium-sized vehicle. I don't have a driveway, and the, the situation is one where the, sorry, I had some notes Business has been there for almost 25 years, over 24 and a half years I've had a business there. And for employees and for person to come, people to come in there, they, they need parking. There's very limited parking there because Watcom Middle School is a block away, and so there's a lot of, parking is an issue. It's very, it's minimal because of actually a lot of the city court and county personnel park along there, and, and so I really do, we do need parking on Gerard Street, and that's why I'm, I'm here this evening to address this issue and hoping that you'll take that into consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Daniel.
My name is John Curl, K-E-R-L. I'm a 50-year resident of Bellingham. My wife was born and raised here. We love Bellingham, and we applaud all of the movement forward on providing bike safety and the progress that's been made. We really do appreciate that. But I want to be very clear, I like to speak out fervently against removing all parking on Eldridge. We live on Eldridge, and if you know on the Bayside, there is no side streets, no side streets. On the other side, you'll have these streets with no parking in the beginning part, and we're down further, so that shortly you have Monroe. There's very little, and people coming to visit us would have to walk, find parking in these side streets, take their lives in their, in their hands to cross Eldridge to try to find our house. Think of it in the wintertime. This is, the issue for Eldridge is not bike lanes, it's the speed. There's been people that have been killed, maimed. You talk to our neighbors, hair-raising stories after hair-raising stories of multiple accidents. A telephone pole in front of our house is ripped, totally knocked down, power pulled off my neighbor's homes. That's just one incident. I could go on and on. I want to urge you not to approve this for Eldridge. There's got to be another solution, but what I'd like to say is, please, address the issue of speed on Eldridge. You go 25 miles an hour, you would be passed, and I want to assure you, those of us that live on Eldridge, if we can, we don't park on Eldridge. But we have a little, my wife and I have a small driveway, a little plot of land, our cars are back-to-back. So what do we do for deliveries? What, what do we do for guests that come to visit us? This, to me, would be a nightmare if you approved it. I want to say thank you, though, that you're planning to put in protective crosswalks. Well, that is really great news. We want to encourage you, but please hear our fervent voice that Eldridge is not the one to take away all parking. It would just make it catastrophic for those of us living on Eldridge. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you. My name is Jim Larison. I'm a resident of Bellingham for at least 20 years, and like Mr. Curl, I would seriously, I'm against this idea of eliminating parking on Eldridge. People need parking on Eldridge. The city has spent years telling people they can't develop additional off-street parking to get their cars off of Eldridge, because it was against whatever planning that they had in mind at the time. Apparently, some, some of that might be changing lately, but the consequence is, you have lots of people on Eldridge who have no alternative to parking on Eldridge. The idea that there's enough parking a block away from these homes on Eldridge is just ludicrous. Any walkthrough of the neighborhood will show you that is just not the case. As Mr. Curl already pointed out, every year, property is destroyed, city is property destroyed, people are speeding down that road, there's no enforcement. It's a residential road by any definition, it's a residential road. The city appears to be wanting to treat it as an arterial. They want to change it to an arterial without doing the engineering necessary to change it to an arterial. They've refused to mark their crosswalks better than we have to protect the crosswalks that they have. The speeds are unbelievable. I personally have gone down to the police department and volunteered to use a radar gun and radar people on that road. The average speed on that road, the posted speed is 25 miles an hour. The average speed is 45 and above on that road. People do it willy-nilly. City vehicles do it. City buses speed on that road. Fortunately, I don't think any city vehicles have caused any property damage or maimed anyone yet, but lots of other drivers have. Please don't say that people are too late with these comments. The justification for these parking removals are given in a six-year plan that are put out there, no details in it, and tonight, we're finally hearing some details. And what do you know, some people are objecting to some of those details. The process needs to change. You can't spring these details on people and say that we shouldn't, we shouldn't complain and that we should have complained six years ago. And the details haven't even been worked out today, let alone six years ago. We're seeing what the plan is now, and we're asking you on Eldridge. This is poorly thought out. You're endangering bicycle riders, already property owners, and people who work and service those are risking their property and their lives, and now you want to put bicycle riders on the same thing. An alternative, just like I use every day, I ride bikes all over town, is Monroe.
Time. Thank you, Jim. Next speaker?
All right, we have Ken Mann as the last registered. You'll have an opportunity, don't worry.
My name's Ken Mann. I live on Eldridge. Greetings, council. Thank you for your service to the city. I, I know it's not an easy job. My request is that you vote no to remove parking on Eldridge. The problem on Eldridge, as some of my neighbors, who I've never met, but I appreciate your comments, the problem on Eldridge is speed. This is a 25 mile-per-hour zone with zero enforcement, it's a mile-long straightaway that lends itself to higher speeds already. So pedestrians, cyclists, parked cars, delivery folks are all at risk, all the time, every day, already. This is the problem we need to solve, is the speed problem. The street needs traffic calming measures, not increased throughput and higher speeds. So as of now, parked cars are the only visual cue on Eldridge that maybe you should think about slowing down. By removing parking, you're going to make it more dangerous for everybody, including bikers. And the idea that this painted stripe is going to slow cars down, to me, is ridiculous. You're, you're proposing over a mile-long straightaway with some painted white lines. To me, that, that's a drag racing strip. I don't think, I hope, that's not what you're trying to accomplish. As was mentioned, it's important to note, on the water side of Eldridge, there are no side streets and no alleys. There's no place for UPS, SSC, and any delivery folks, landscapers, plumbers, painters, roofers, visitors, grandparents, to safely park and navigate the traffic. And let's just focus on SSC for a second. If you put these plastic posts everywhere, how's SSC going to access the curb to collect the piles of cardboard and garbage and cans that we're recycling, the compost toters? I asked the Public Works Director about this. He said, "We could put all of our garbage in the bike lane, and then the SSC trucks could park in the traffic lane and collect it from there." I was kind of shocked to think that we would block bike lanes for 12 to 24 hours every week with garbage, and also block all the traffic behind it as one of those SSC trucks putters down the avenue. Again, mentioning the water, the fact that on the water side, there's no streets or alley. Already, it's limited to where we can park. The other side of the street also doesn't have much parking. We all like walking, but occasionally folks come with kids, or they're elderly, or they're carrying groceries, or they have a lawnmower, or things that they're going to do work at your house. With no ability to park on that water side of the street, they're going to have to cross Eldridge, dodging the traffic on the way, which has been mentioned is very high speed. I don't think this is safe, and when you remove the parking, you're going to remove those visual cues that people should slow down and give that little refuge for people to, when they do try and play Frogger going across the street.
Your time has expired.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Do we have other speakers who signed up?
There are no more officially signed up. I don't know if we want to open it up.
So are there other speakers in chambers who'd like to speak on this topic? Okay. So if we can line up three at a time, we have two along the wall now, so.
Can we go up there?
Sure. So three people could line up at the microphone at the top and three at the bottom, and when we get towards the end, I'll call for three more. You can go ahead. You can go ahead.
Some good opinions tonight. My name is Ryan Rickerts, R-I-C-K-E-R-T-S. I've lived in Bellingham for 22 years, and I've been riding the streets of Bellingham that entire time. I'm also very involved in getting other people cycling for recreation, but also that usually turns into using it for transportation, for work and shopping and the like I rode here tonight. I've lived in many neighborhoods. As a renter, you know, we move a lot, so I've lived in Birchwood, I've commuted on Meridian, so I'm familiar with all of these proposals. Before I moved here, I was actually doored, which to be doored means someone opens their car door in front of you when there isn't enough room between the traffic and the parking. And so rather than taking the basic mover into traffic, you might just fly over the door, which fortunately, I was able to tuck my head and roll and pop up okay. This was in San Diego. The person was completely in shock, they had no idea I was coming. It was not intentional. I've also been doored in Bellingham on Magnolia. The bike lane does not appear between Champion and Commercial. It starts at Commercial. This is by where Black Drop used to be. I've also been doored there by a woman who was very apologetic. That time, I fell over and experienced damage to my bicycle. Fortunately, it was not very expensive, and so I just rode away again. But I don't push my luck, I just purchased a new helmet. It's one of the more terrifying prospects to be doored, so I've learned to always look through cars that are on the right for a driver and just expect that they will possibly open the door on me. So I am a big advocate of having these bike lanes. That being said, hearing neighbors' concerns, I remember when Cornwall was proposed for the bike lanes, which they now have, it was quite controversial, and I wondered why we didn't just use Ellis where there's already traffic calming roundabouts and a perfectly good bike lane. But since you did put in lanes, I do use them. It's faster, but I would prefer to not hire residents because then it causes confrontation. They're not as much a fan of cyclists. A lot of cyclists use Eldridge to ride out to Ferndale and Lommy Peninsula recreationally. They would certainly use a bike lane, but if it came down to causing a conflict with our neighbors, lack of driveways, lack of alley access, I would say choose selectively. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan.
Todd Ligistee here as a private citizen. At the last Planning Commission meeting, an appointed Planning Commissioner made the comment that Bellingham doesn't really have a parking problem. I'm here to discuss this in light of the proposal to remove on-street parking. Let me first say that I absolutely support making safer bikeways. The accidents that have occurred along Eldridge really attest to the tragedy there and the need for speed control. But there is no magic wand that just makes cars go away. We live in the Pacific North wet, and while climate change may be giving us more drought-ridden summers, we also have to acknowledge that we are predicted to get more rain in a shorter period of time. This is not conducive to year-round biking. People don't want to get their groceries on a bike in the rain. They don't want to transport their children in the rain on an e-bike. So even as we transition to electric vehicles, we will still need parking. But the city continues to not just remove on-street parking, as in this case, but also to allow developers to put in less parking through variances. Developers getting parking space reductions through variances may lower the cost of construction, but it doesn't make housing more affordable. It only increases profits. Developers don't rent out units at affordable rates out of the goodness of their hearts. How can I say this? Because the city is giving an eight-year tax exemption to luxury apartments on Samish Way, and yet they aren't priced to be affordable. The city is giving up approximately $1 million over eight years of local, state, and school revenue, and the rents are still almost 20% more even than the highest affordable rental rate of 80% AMI under the housing levy. Not only am I here to point out the fallacy of parking variances reducing rental rates and that tax exemptions without affordability don't help either, but to say that Bellingham does have a parking problem. The Planning Commissioner that thinks Bellingham doesn't have a parking problem lives in my neighborhood. I have people parking on my lawn, also parking with one tire in the open ditch and the rest of the car in the street, and they also park blocking sightlines on arterial streets at intersections. This creates a massive safety hazard. I've even heard that firefighters driving down car-choked streets have to slow down. So as the city removes on-street parking, it has to stop allowing parking spot reductions through variances. It isn't helping affordability. This council even heard this afternoon that low-income housing residents in a high-rise tower in Fairhaven have parking issues. This is as dense an area where people would not need a car as exists in Bellingham, and yet they have parking issues. It's really important to make safer bikeways, but as you remove parking, it's important to acknowledge the impacts, especially when those impacts are amplified by your actions that don't increase affordability but increase developer profit. Please stop reducing parking spot requirements through variances unless you tie it to permanently affordable housing, both for rentals and for ADUs and for owned housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Todd.
My name is Reese Fowler. I've been a resident of Bellingham for 15 years, and I live in the Columbia neighborhood. I wanted to speak in support of the resolution in front of you tonight, adopting it in full with some minor caveats. Going through the different sections, well, like I said, I live in the Columbia neighborhood, right actually at the Fountain District Urban Village. And so as a biking family, myself, my partner, and our three-year-old son, we bike everywhere. So all of these routes are places that we go normally, except for the Cornwall portion. So on West Illinois Street, biking along that definitely, getting bike lanes in will be a huge help. And then in general, for most folks, right, Parkview Elementary School is right there, Sunnyland Elementary, and then also the Illinois pedestrian bridge that goes over I-5. It's also all along that Illinois corridor. And that's one of only three options of being able to cross I-5 without being next to a street. So getting bike lanes on Illinois will be wonderful. I'm not, I don't have a preference on removing parking from the north side or the south side. Either one works for us, so. Going on to Meridian Street and Gerard, just because they link up, definitely bike along that a lot as well. We go to Cornwall Park, and coming down Meridian, back down to the Urban Village, is really sketchy place to bike, really challenging in just the narrow lanes with parked cars and things like that. So that also would be very helpful to have. And of course, you know, further down, as you're going down on Gerard, it connects with Watkin Middle School, so also right there, another great safe-ass school option. There is one section that I would have a minor concern about, a general concern, I should say, and that's where Illinois and Meridian are connecting there, where the roundabout is proposed to be put in. You know, in general, bike lanes leading up to roundabouts in Bellingham are challenged because the majority of them are angled up onto the sidewalk, and so you go, you know, in the bike lane and then up onto the sidewalk and around the roundabout. And so that, you know, how that interfaces, that's a really important piece. As for Cornwall Avenue, we don't really bike down there, except when the new Cornwall Park comes in, we're excited to use the bike lane, so all for that. And on Eldridge, I can't really speak to the residents and their challenges there, but biking along Eldridge is definitely a very sketchy thing. So getting bike lanes in there would be very helpful for us as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Reese. So we'll go to the top.
What do I do? Do I just press the button?
Yeah, so the button should light up when it's on.
Is that on? Am I on? Is that right or no? Oh, hi. Thank you, council. I'm Barbara Alton. You might have seen a lot of letters I've written regarding this. Can you hear me okay? Okay. So I would like to say, I am an Eldridge resident. I am not opposed to bicycle lanes. What I'm opposed to is the fact that we do have a very wide street, and I kind of disagree that we can't put parking and bike lanes on that street, but the speeds, the crashes, they're a major issue. Painting something on there is not going to narrow it down, is not going to slow traffic. Currently, we've requested painted strips in the middle of the road. We were told that would happen this summer. It didn't happen. So relying on paint and those flexible bollards that won't last really worries me. I don't feel that that bike lane is going to be safe in three years. What we need is narrow widths. What we need is slow down the traffic. We need to really address the fact that we know impaired drivers are driving that street on a rainy night, in the middle of the afternoon, any time of day. How do we give them visual clues? How do we slow them down? How do we make sure that pedestrians are safe? How do we make sure the bicyclists that are on the roadway are safe? We need to reassess where the crossings are, because I think Lafayette is kind of an odd location when you have West Street, which connects to Squawken Parkway. The bike lanes are not connecting to Holly, they stop at Broadway. They're not connecting to Roder, which is kind of odd, because you're showing that nice connection, but you're not showing how it gets down to Roder, which is your bicycle lanes. So this whole Eldridge portion, to me, needs a lot of design work. I'm a little curious if there's going to be a sidewalk on Illinois Street, because right now, there isn't between Lynn all the way up to Hagan. You walk on the street, and that's not, that's kind of sketchy. And then I'm questioning why you're doing it on Cornwall at this time. I feel like there's a lot of RV people living down there. Where are they going to go? I know, I don't really know enough about that, but I'm a little uncomfortable with the proposal to put bike lanes down there when I know there are people that have housing issues that are living down there and don't, I don't know where you propose to relocate those people. Okay? That's about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Is there anyone else up top who wanted to speak? Okay, I'll come back to the bottom.
Hello, my name is Jim Fonte. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I'm here on behalf of Walk and Roll Bellingham. We are a nonprofit organization with a mission to create a safer, healthier, and more livable city where everyone is able to walk, roll, ride a bike to get where they want to go. Our group has approximately 600 supporters. We are glad to see that the projects from the 2014 Bicycle Master Plans are moving forward. Street spaces will be reallocated from parking to bike lanes on sections of West Illinois, Meridian, Gerard, Eldridge, and Cornwall, all of which are priority connections between neighborhoods, parks, schools, and shopping areas. These disconnected arterial routes have been impediments to using bicycle network and creating high-stress areas for vulnerable road users. It is our belief that public street space should be utilized to move people. Every person needs to be able to use public streets safely, whether or not they're in a vehicle. Allowing cars to park on public streets has been a luxury subsidized by taxpayers that we can no longer afford to do. Public streets should be used to help people move around safely, not for temporary car storage. But more importantly, we would like to point out the history of how these projects came to Public Works project list and what that means. These projects made it onto all the following plans, following a robust public process. The 2012 pedestrian plan, the 2014 bike plan, the 2016 comp plan, and the 2021 ADA plan. The city council, you, and your predecessors voted to adopt each and every one of these plans. The projects you are considering this evening are also part of a multiple-six-year TIPS that include projects on West Illinois, Meridian, and Gerard. These TIPS were also approved by you. This means city staff has already been directed to implement the projects in these plans. If you vote not to move forward with these projects, why are we even bothering to have these plans at all? Our faith in the public process would be greatly shaken if these projects were abandoned this evening after waiting years from 2014 bike plan for them to come to fruition. Thank you for allowing me to speak on behalf of Walk and Roll Bellingham. Please approve the proposals to relocate parking street spaces for vulnerable road users and give bikers a safer place to ride. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Next speaker.
Hi, my name is Stephen Wolf. I live on Eldridge. I wasn't planning on speaking, but I think that it's important. I understand that the bike lanes are not meant to slow down traffic, but speed on Eldridge is a problem. I am past daily going to work and coming home. I've even been past on the right-hand side of my car while I'm driving down Eldridge. The bike lanes would not slow that down. We don't have enough crosswalks. Where we live on Eldridge, we either have Lafayette or Keesling, which are not close distance, so if the parking was taken away, then our guests would have no place to park because the people who live in those areas park on those streets. So there's no spaces left for anybody who lives in Eldridge to park on Lafayette or Keesling or any of those roads around there. So I request that you do not take away the parking on Eldridge. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. Yes.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
My name is Marcy Potner, and I wasn't, again, like the other gentlemen, I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but this has been very much a conversation that we've been having in the community. One of my, I live on the water side of Eldridge, on the corner, right across the street from West Street, and I've, I'm glad there's going to be a crosswalk there. I wish there was more crosswalks planned, even now. When my family come to visit, or there's a, something is happening and we have guests coming, I know that sounds trivial when you're looking at, doesn't sound important, but mostly my family are important to me. And right now, it's good because if they park on a side street, if they can find a parking spot, they'll have a crosswalk. But the other people up and down the street where there are no crosswalks, if they're having to park on a side street, if they're lucky enough to find parking, they're having to cross the street without a sidewalk? I'm just asking you, is it, do they have to walk two blocks to take a sidewalk, even if the cars honor the sidewalk? But I had a situation where I lived across the street for about six months, and crossing Eldridge without a sidewalk was, someone gave me a card that said it was like a squirrel crossing a road. I would think I'm okay, and then the traffic would come so fast. My point is really the traffic, the speed on Eldridge, and we really, right now, we just need more crosswalks and removing the cars and pushing people into the side streets where now they're coming and crossing the street anywhere they can, it just puts a bit more risk because the cars are going so fast. So I really ask you to not vote for Eldridge losing its parking, please. And I'd like to invite you to come to my house and try to cross the street sometime. Really, you're councilman, you know, have a cup of coffee, and we'll cross a couple times and see how hard it is. All right, how dangerous. Thank you.
Thank you, Marcy. There's not a button at that one, but you can just lower it.
No button?
Nope. It's always live.
Yeah. Well, for one thing, oh, my name's Dale Whiffler, not Whipple, but Whiffler. And before we started the bike lane, they started handicap, you know, making the sidewalks good for handicap people, and they hadn't even begun on that yet because there's a few that are, and most of them are just, you can barely get on. In fact, a couple of months ago, a couple of weeks ago, a few weeks ago, I went and called the city and asked them if they would make it so I could get up on the sidewalk at our church. And the guy says, "Well, when we do it, we'll give you a call." Well, I don't expect to ever get a call back from the guy because you got to bounce up on that ledge, and you either go too far into the grass and have to try to wiggle your way out, or you fall off the sidewalk into the garden or way. And sidewalks in town, well, mainly around Baker View, the city denies keeping them up because blackberry bushes go into the sidewalk and you can't get around them. And when they do... And when they do cut the blackberry bushes down, they forget about the ones that are coming out of the curb, which are getting who knows what all over you, lice or ticks or fleas or, they don't bother with that. And it takes them about a month to write a letter to the homeowner that owns the sidewalk to get them to do it, and then by that time, summer's over and it's ready for the next year of growth. And people, businesses, they put signs in the center of the sidewalk. And some put sandbags around their signs so they don't blow away. And you can't squeeze around those signs. When I started using the bike lane, I asked quite a few policemen if anybody had a problem with me using the bike lane. And there's not one person, they said that we know how dangerous the sidewalks are because you go down, there's a hill going down and it tips you sideways for the driveways, and then you bounce back up the other side. And there's sidewalks sink, and the city don't really care if they're sunken. You got, you got a big two-to-three-inch deal that you, oh, I'm out of time, huh?
Time, Dale.
Well, for one thing, just about less than a month ago, I had to call 911 to get me out of the sand because they took up the sidewalks.
Thank you for speaking, Dale.
And the fire department came and pulled me out of there, and I ruined my wheel on the wheelchair.
We have to call time in order to allow the other speakers, but thank you for coming in, Chair. Thank you, Dale.
I better catch a bus. How am I supposed to get out of here? This way? Appreciate it.
Hi, my name is Todd Hafner, and I am also a resident on Eldridge. I do support biking in the city, and I would like to be able to do it safely. It seems to me that, that the speed issue on Eldridge and the biking issue on Eldridge, that we can't solve them without solving, we can't solve the problem both without solving the speed. I think if you're putting bikes into an, a street that has no solution for the speed, I think it's going to be a problem. It's a safety issue. We already have had people on that street that have lost limbs because of, because of speed in the middle of the day when they're gardening. You think you're going to be protected from, you know, safely gardening, and then you end up a trip to Harborview to lose a leg. I myself have been a recipient of that. I was the transformer that was knocked out for multiple years ago. The car was going so fast down Eldridge that he flipped the power line that they, it all the way went, it went all the way around. There were live wires on the street. I didn't have power for three days in the middle of a snowstorm. We've had a neighbor across the street that had a catastrophic accident in front of his house with two cars that demolished his front, his front yard. I mean, these are not slow speeds. These are rollover accidents that are happening on our street. And if you invite bikes to come onto that without solving the speed issue, it's, it's going to be dangerous for both pedestrians because there's, there's limited crossing across Eldridge, and now you're asking these people to not have parking, park away on other streets, and then find parking across, and then walk safely across this dangerous street where there are no protected crossways right now. So I think you would do some, you'd do the community good to find a solution to the speeding issue if, if indeed you're going to put the bike lanes in there too. But the speeding issue needs to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you, Todd. Next speaker.
Good evening. My name is Kevin Clark, and I'm not going to say anything too important except to ask that the council members think about the big picture and seriously consider all of the input from tonight. And I know I heard from one gentleman that this has been waiting, waiting for this since 2014, and I think maybe considering all the input tonight from the residents of several streets and sections of the city, we might, you might need to consider it even further. I went to China the first time in 1983 when they first opened up the country to tourism, where you could travel freely. And there were thousands and thousands and thousands of bicycles and very few cars and a few trucks. And now, I, I have gone to China six or seven times during the last decade, and, you know, they went from a bicycle society to a vehicular society and planned everything out. And so there are main streets just for the vehicles, and along all the main streets in all the cities, there are side streets for smaller vehicles. And in front of all the buildings, there's, there are parking places, lots of parking places, bases, so people can, on, on smaller vehicles can travel along the side streets that parallel all the main streets, and the vehicles go into big streets. So they planned it all out. We're going the other way. And so I think we need to really think about this, and there are so many issues that the local people have brought up, and we may need to think about this even longer and harder and try to incorporate all of the issues that are involved in this change going the other direction. So I'm old enough that I think that the streets belong to vehicles. You know, when I was a kid, I rode my bike around town and there wasn't much traffic and so forth. But in my mind, the, the streets are for motorized vehicles. That's wrong. We've got to change that, and we've got to change, we've got to stop the CO2. You know, we've got to do that part of the process. But it's a, it's an issue that we have to deal with going forward that's got to involve a lot of people's individual rights and freedoms, and some people's individual rights and freedoms are going to get curtailed, and others are going to be opened up, like the free bike exchange, you know, the movement of people. And I admire that move to pedestrian and, and non-motorized vehicle kind of mobility. And, and we've got to do it. But I think, I think we need to maybe consider this a little longer and harder and, and look at the streets from the testimony given tonight about the streets that are being considered. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kevin.
Hi, my name is Natalie Chavez. I didn't plan on speaking tonight, but after hearing all the speakers, I just felt an urge to do so, I took some notes. First off, I'm actually shocked that this project is even up for consideration right now. You just had a, you just held a town hall on funding priorities, and I don't recall, maybe I missed it, but I don't recall one community member bringing up bike lanes. You know, we've, especially after the last couple of years with the increase in crime, increase in homelessness, we have, you know, we're going to have a, we already have a food shortage, it's going to get more severe. We have inflation, prices are going to continue to increase. And so I'm wondering if this is up for consideration because of state and federal funding. And that, it, it sounds like a really feel-good project, but you've had some unorganized planning and a lack of communication with residents and business owners who this is going to affect. And it sounds like we don't even have our sidewalks and our crosswalks even up to par yet. So I hope that you put a pause on this project. The other thing to consider is our weather. Last winter, we had a couple snowstorms, an ice storm, we had flooding. We don't have very many days where people can, can cycle. Have you all cycled in Bellingham the last week? That's something that, you know, we need to ask ourselves these questions. I've been here for around 18 years in Bellingham. And I remember when, at Chestnut, it's a one-way street going up a hill, okay? Every time, and I drive in Bellingham a lot, it's been there for around three, three and a half years, I'd have to check on that, you know? And they literally eliminated a whole street. Now we have more traffic there, but there's a bike lane on the right side. How many times have you seen a cyclist going up Chestnut all the way to Samish? Okay, once in all these years have I almost gotten an accident because I was shocked to see a cyclist. I wanted to get out and take a picture. So we really need to look at that. How many people on these five corridors, how many cyclists are actually using these, these corridors? We need to really, you know, take some, ask some critical questions. Somebody mentioned about the process needing to change. I really hope that, there's a lot of, you know, residents here tonight from Eldridge, but what about all the other neighborhoods? Where are they? They got a postcard and they, for three days later, they were supposed to turn it in? I have a client who's in a motorized wheelchair, and I've been on sidewalks with him in Bellingham. One around the hospital, Squawken Parkway, across the street from the hospital, and they're, they're cracked, there's like tree trunks that are pushing them up. They're very dangerous. So I hope that you look at other priorities.
Thank you.
In regards to this. Thank you.
Are there other members of the public wishing to speak this evening who are in chambers? I know we have some people joining us remotely as well. Anyone else in chambers? No. Okay. So at this time, we will turn to remote attendees who would like to speak.
I'm going to start with those who signed up first. So Sonia Max. Looks like she's still connecting.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry. Hello, my name is Sonia Max. Thank you for giving me time to speak this evening in favor of bike lanes. It's actually one of my favorite topics. I do often ride a bike to get around Bellingham, as well as drive a car and walk. I have two main points. One, connections for usable bicycle network, and two, the planning process that got us here. First, the projects that you are considering this evening are critical connections that are currently missing in Bellingham's bicycle network. These segments are gaps that dissuade a lot of people from getting on their bicycles and actually riding. As Reese mentioned, West Illinois is the only direct way to ride from the Columbia and Cornwall neighborhoods across I-5 to Roosevelt and Barclay Village. Bike lanes on Guide, Meridian and Gerard would connect North Cornwall Park and the Fountain District to downtown. And Eldridge is a key link to BTC and the Lemmy Peninsula from downtown and the Fountain District. And it's perhaps the most needed bicycle connection west of downtown to Marine Drive, which the county has already spent millions of dollars improving with bike lanes. And by the way, every house on the south side of that street does have its own private driveway. And I would respectfully disagree with a lot of the residents on Eldridge that the best use of these public streets is to open them up to allow people to travel along them safely and comfortably by bicycle, instead of using them for the private storage of their automobiles. My second point tonight is that these projects have already been part of multiple approved plans, as Jim mentioned earlier. The 2012 pedestrian plan, the 2014 bike plan, the 2016 comp plan, and the 2021 ADA transition plan, as well as several TIPS that you or previous council members already voted to adopt, as Jim mentioned. And if you vote against these projects tonight, my question is why bother to make long-range plans in the first place? If a popularity contest arises before each project starts, there's really no point to our planning process. I've been looking forward to these projects for years as well. So please vote not only to promote safe mobility for all modes of travel, please vote to keep our confidence in Bellingham's ability to plan, and to keep our confidence in the public process that guides those plans by authorizing removal of parking to install bike lanes on the streets in question. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening.
Thank you, Sonia.
Alex Gavin. Yes, we can.
Hi there, good evening. My name's Alex Gavin. I'm a resident of Cordotta neighborhood, a regular bicycle and public transit commuter, as well as a Bellingham resident for more than five years. Tonight, I'm here to speak in support of the proposed parking removal for bike lanes, and would like to emphasize a few main points. Before I continue, I'd like to thank the members of the council, involved city employees, as well as engaged members of the public for their efforts in ensuring this proposal is successfully and considerably implemented. Thank you as well to Walk and Roll Bellingham for advocating for this proposal. As a cyclist, safety for cyclists on the road is always at the top of my mind. Just two days ago, I was nearly hit by a negligent driver while in a marked bike lane. It's sadly just a fact of life for cyclists at this point. The proposed parking removals for bike lanes continue the essential work to improve safety and accessibility for cyclists of all ages and ability. That said, I do believe that Bellingham is not being ambitious enough in this regard. I urge the council and relevant city employees to especially consider traffic calming measures and bike, protective bike lanes in these proposals, especially those which work to physically separate drivers from cyclists, which really isn't the case with strip of paint or plastic posts. One such place for these things, as noted by members of the community, is on Eldridge. The second point I'd like to make, which is echoed by other members here of the public, is that the creation of a cohesive bike network across the entire city is, is essential. Currently, there are areas of really good bike infrastructure interspersed with dangerous shared traffic lanes, often on main arterials. These proposed changes serve to partially fix this problem, but lack of cohesive bike paths will continue even if this proposal passes in full. An example of this is near my neighborhood. It's Meridian from I-5 on north. The proposed bike lane served to get cyclists there, but kind of leave us to the sidewalks immediately after arriving. For myself, Meridian north of I-5 is effectively a no-go zone, as it's simply too dangerous to cycle on. Thus, my only path into town is via northwest. Another area of this sort of shared lanes being kind of dangerous is the proposed changes on Eldridge to downtown Bellingham. On the way there, from downtown, you share a lane. I'm not sure what street that is, but what I'm trying to say is if we sort of continue to enforce the status quo, cyclists continue to be put in dangerous situations. Cars clearly are not our future if we're serious about combating climate change as a community. Our future is public transit, bikes, and walking. Let's stop, excuse me, let's work to stop dangerous conditions and actually put our money where the mouth is regarding climate change. I encourage members of the council to accept these proposals and continue advocating for cycling infrastructure throughout the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. Next speaker, please.
We had a Janet, that she didn't put her last name, so I'm assuming it's Janet Higbee-Robinson, who's got her hand raised online, and we will promote her shortly.
Yes. Yeah, I'm ready now. Are you ready?
We are.
Thank you. Hello, council, mayor, city staff, and citizens. Thank you for your service to Bellingham. I'm a Puget neighborhood, neighborhood resident, a homeowner, but not a car owner. My name is Janet Higbee-Robinson. I cycle, walk, I have to turn my phone back on, sorry, I'm reading. I cycle, walk, and bus all year long, no matter the weather. Council, please approve the decision regarding five bike ped upgrades agreed upon by our transportation committee and your own staff. These bikeways and sidewalk projects emerged from a decade of planning by Public Works and experts with transparent community involvement. Citizens showed their support. Citizens showed their support by passing the Transportation Fund only two years ago. Reduction of parking to provide safe space for bike and foot travel will enhance neighborhoods, as well as ensure connector routes for a greater variety of street users. Also, some of the projects complement safe routes to schools, specifically routes to Parkland and Sunnyland and Watcom Middle, even Bellingham Tech, and I've ridden Eldridge to get to Arlington. I'm a substitute for the public schools. In regards to Eldridge, narrower lanes and traffic calming measures will force slower speeds. Please keep in mind that Walk and Roll Bellingham has recommended citywide lowering of speeds to 20 miles per hour. Streets are, after all, our collective public space, and they are intended for movement, not for parked cars. Steady work on improvement of Bellingham's walkability, bikeability, and bus use will reduce the need to provide expensive and unsustainable parking. This will free up space to make Bellingham an attractive, livable, and healthy city into its future. Support parking removal for five new bike ped upgrades. Thank you.
Thank you, Janet. Next speaker, please.
Sam Applegate. Sam, you should be able to unmute yourself and turn on your video if you wish. Sam, there should be a pop-up on your screen asking to unmute. Are you able to unmute yourself?
Thank you. I'm sorry about that. I just wanted to reiterate and support the several speakers, including Eric and John Curl and some of the other Eldridge Avenue residents. And as a, as a resident of Eldridge Avenue in the area in question, I think it would be dangerous to mix cyclists with an already hazardous situation with speed. So I think that point has been made, but I just wanted to reinforce that. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Next speaker, please.
Brian Estes.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, well, good evening, council, and thank you for holding a public hearing on this very important issue. As some of you may recall, I was the co-chair of the 2020 ballot measure, the Bellingham Transportation Fund, which did pass with an 82% margin. So many in Bellingham are very much in favor of a lot more, more and safer choices for how we move around our city. And the issue is really not just removing parking. It's about meeting the needs of the 25% or so of Bellinghamsters who don't use a car and walk and bike or take public transit. We need to support the established bike plan and give mortal, give more modal choice to our residents, and this will also help us meet our climate change goals. And I would disagree with several speakers that these projects have been planned for many, many years and are critical to build out the bike network. As has been shown by many studies of bike networks, if you build a connected, safe bike network, many people will use it. If you build it, they will come. Please approve all these projects tonight without delay. We simply can't wait to build out the bike network. A strong majority, 82% of voters, supported these types of projects two years ago. Don't let them down. Please approve these plans tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Next speaker, please.
Cameron Miller.
Council members, thank you for your time. Thank you also to Hannah and Michael for meeting with me and other neighbors along Eldridge last week so that you could experience our safety concerns firsthand. My name is Cameron Miller, and I live along the south side of Eldridge. I'm speaking tonight to ask you to vote no on the removal of parking and the addition of bike lanes along Eldridge and along Cornwall. I want to convey my experience seeking to advocate for greater safety, especially as it relates to those that are most vulnerable and which I care most about. Specifically for me, that's my six-year-old daughter and my elderly parents. Having my parents join us for regular family meals, especially through the pandemic, has been an important way for us to stay connected. I walk with my six-year-old daughter to Columbia Elementary School every day. I shudder at the day that she's old enough to walk by herself and has no safe way to cross Eldridge. I had a car flip through my front yard at what was likely 70 miles per hour, sharing off the telephone pole in front of my house, and finally landing upside down two houses away. This spring, there was one significant crash a week within a block of my house. Two out of every 10 cars, according to the city's traffic speed study statistics, go more than 40 miles an hour along Eldridge. Yet there's only one poorly marked crosswalk along the mile-long stretch and no other traffic calming measures. Bike lanes won't make Eldridge meaningfully safer for my daughter walking to school, and will make it meaningfully more dangerous for my elderly parents. Picture in your mind my mom and my 81-year-old dad with Parkinson's, shuffling across Eldridge in the dark without a crosswalk and unknown distance to their car after spending a Sunday dinner at our house. Now listen for that accelerating car that starts at the base of Eldridge, seeing how fast it can get going. Picture what happens when the two of them meet. That's the decision you're being asked to make tonight. As one clear example of the inadequate process that Public Works has used to gain citizens' feedback, I offer the survey postcard that was mailed to residents along Eldridge on the Friday before Labor Day weekend with no return postage and a due date of Monday, Labor Day. Public Works will retort, "It was an accident!" Yet after months of experiencing a number of similar things with Public Works, I believe it was intentional. Interestingly however, they had the bicycle community queued up to enter their support for all of these bike lane projects throughout the city. Notice, in fact, that the number of survey responses that indicate the bicycle facilities and protected bike lanes are their first and second priority are essentially identical for all the projects. So a small citywide group of bicycle advocates blindly pushing their agenda is up against residents that use their streets, cross their streets, have their children cross their streets, and are at risk of being hit by cars on their streets on a daily basis. I'll leave you with one last thought to bring this home. Because I live on Eldridge, I've been framed as being privileged by Public Works and the Transportation Committee, and therefore, the argument is that my concerns for safety shouldn't count. I want you to note that the project to remove parking on Cornwall between Laurel and Pine, Public Works has offered that parking utilization is extremely low and non-existent. Our most vulnerable community members leave their cars along Cornwall. Apparently, Public Works thinks they're not...
Thank you, Cameron.
Okay, next up, we have Andrew.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Perfect. Appreciate it. Andrew Lawrence, I want to thank the council for their time and consideration today. I also want to thank those on the council and with Public Works who took the time to talk on the phone, meet in person, to review some of the issues of the removal of parking on Eldridge. I'm a resident on the north end of Eldridge on the west side. I'm also a father of a first grader that attends Columbia and currently race across the street to get to school with no crossings within a mile of our house. I'm also one of three houses on the west side of Eldridge that doesn't have level off-street parking to accommodate parking during all seasons, or for those that have limited mobility, like elderly family and guests. Parking removal, removal on Eldridge doesn't address the main concern in the neighborhood or those passing through of an unsafe street, and doesn't put pedestrians first in this plan. The west side of Eldridge doesn't have side streets, and therefore, residents, service people, delivery people, and visitors will be forced to cross Eldridge with limited crossings. Today, I'm asking the city council to reject the removal of parking tonight and ask Public Works to come back with plans to address the following items. Additional crossings outside the two new and revamping one of the existing. Right now, in the plan, there's a half-mile stretch between Lafayette and Carl Lobe Park without a crossing. I also ask that additional traffic calming measures be researched and put in place to slow the speed of traffic, which is truly the main issue that we have on the street. And then finally, I do ask that Public Works to make some accommodation for those of us that rely on street parking like ourselves. We use Eldridge Avenue for parking our two vehicles daily, along with our guests, and would be forced to walk 250 yards from the closest off-street parking with a crossing. Aside from all of this, I do ask for immediate painting of lines on Eldridge. If anyone has driven down the street, ridden your bike down the street, done anything on this street, it is absolutely horrendous. And it's a, it's a safety issue for anyone who's on this street, whether they live here or not. For the record, our family bikes, we walk, we use Eldridge daily and ask for a safer neighborhood for those that live here, as well as those that visit or pass through year-round regardless of mode of transportation. I would hope that we can come up with a solution that fits all. I'm not against bicycle lanes. I would actually welcome that, but I think there's other things that we need to take into consideration here. So I do ask that you delay the vote on removal of parking. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Next speaker, please.
Eric. I don't see an audio connection for Eric, so if you've called in, it's star nine. And then star six to unmute. Eric, I don't see an audio yet, so if you called in, it's star nine. And then star six to unmute, and we'll promote you over. Maybe we'll move on to the next one, see if we can get that figured out for Eric. Trish Newbold.
Thank you. First of all, I would like to thank all of the council members and the members of the public who are weighing in on this. It's clearly a very emotional subject, and I appreciate both sides of the story as well. So I am calling in here in support of, or not in support, of removing public parking from Eldridge Avenue. I do live on the water side of Eldridge, and I have room on my property just for my own vehicle and one other. And so for any other parking requirements, if I were to have guests, which includes family with young children or family with elderly people, that means parking on the side streets. And the side streets already have very limited parking. So it's going to put an extra burden on those streets for parking, and not to mention then the very dangerous crossing to get back over onto my side of Eldridge. So I'm, would really encourage the council to vote against removing parking on Eldridge Avenue. And then I just have some random thoughts and response to some comments that have already been made. With regard to cyclists, I also fully support cyclists being able to get around town. I think a big part of that is cyclists respecting the rules of the road that are already in place, and so often I see that not happening. And so I think if the cyclists really want to garner the respect of the general public, that they need to follow the rules of the road. And I know many do. I do. It's just that so often I see that's not the case. There has been a very significant change in growth in our community within the last 10 years when this study first started to, you know, develop this plan for removing public parking on the Eldridge and elsewhere as well. Well, you know, like what has been said before, there is like, with just with a major assessment in our property taxes over the last year, that's been quite dramatic just within the last year. So I think that needs to be considered as well. I'm a big fan of accessibility for all, so I think as we look at those who are bound to wheelchairs or who have other mobility issues, let's take those into consideration as well. Again, I know I'm really all over the map. I really hope that we're not using China as our example. I would like to point that out as well. And I would also ask, for those of you who are voting on this tonight, how many of you are cycling to work today? How many of you are cycling to get around in your community? And I think also, as we look at safety issues, let's, you know, enforce the laws that we have in place today.
Thank you, Trish. Next speaker, please.
Susan.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I really didn't plan on speaking tonight, but from what I hear, my heart really goes out for those people, especially on Eldridge Road. I'm certainly for alternative modes of transportation, walking and biking and all of that. But the speed on Eldridge is out of control. Removing all the park, or the possibility of removing all the parking, that's just not right. And hearing about the speed and then no crosswalks, and then some of the people and their guests would have to be on off-road and walking long distance, that's just not appropriate for, you know, seniors and children and, you know, groceries and all sorts of stuff, not to mention the delivery trucks and all that sort of stuff. That is just a disaster waiting to happen if you take that away and put all that extra nonsense in that road. It's terrible. Now, there's got to be a different answer to this problem. We want the bikers to get around and all of that, but there has to be a side road to the north where you can make provisions for bike lanes on another road. They do not have to be on Eldridge. There's already enough problems. And on Eldridge, you need to be thinking about reducing the speed to make it safer for all, getting some protected crosslanes and all that sort of stuff. Please, please, consider the people that live on that road and take into consideration what their life will be like if you push this through. There's other places, there's other roads, side roads that the bikes can be on. They don't have to be on Eldridge. And like I said, my heart goes out to those people on Eldridge. They're good, law-abiding, tax-paying citizens. Don't, don't do this to them, okay? It's not, it's not a good thing. We've already got so many more issues to take care of there without making it just a catastrophe for everybody. So please consider, go back to the drawing board and reconsider putting the bikes on another street and, you know, making Eldridge safer for all. Please, don't, don't do this to them. It's, it's not good for anybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Next speaker, please.
Misty Flowers.
Good evening, council. Thank you for opening chambers this evening to the people you represent. I'm speaking tonight to say, please put a halt on removing parking from the people on Eldridge. I totally agree that the speed should be reduced, but people have already been hard-hit these last few years with increased taxes, and the last thing that anybody needs right now is to have a removal of access to their home. Not everybody has the mobility to be able to ride a bike everywhere. There's a lot of families that are way too large to be able to safely maneuver their children and their families through streets like that. And so I would say, please put a halt on that. And again, thank you for opening chambers. Takes a lot of courage to face the people of Bellingham. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Misty. Next speaker, please.
All right, I'm going to circle back to Eric. Hit star nine. Eric, is that you on the audio? You should have permission to speak now, and you hit star six to unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes.
Hello, can you hear me?
Hello, can you hear me? Yes, so my name's Eric Sanuti, I live on Eldridge Avenue. My wife's been a resident here on Eldridge for 33 years, and I'm a native of Bellingham. We're both recently retired, and we've kind of been planning to be able to have friends and family over. We have a one-car garage, we don't have parking off-street other than for one, one car, and I'm concerned about it. I mean, the main issue, you know, I'm not against bike lanes, but I don't know if people realize that Roder Avenue, which parallels all the way down Eldridge on this, on this stretch to town, has bike lanes on both sides of the street, which is a block away. So I'm, I'm wondering why we're not looking at that, the bike lanes that we already have and using those. And there's other alternatives. I'm really not wanting to lose parking on our street just because it's, it'll make it so difficult for service vehicles, it'll make it difficult for us to have company over. We're both getting older, and I just see that it doesn't seem to work. I appreciate, appreciate your consideration, and that's just, I'm looking, I'm against taking away the parking on Eldridge. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Next speaker, please.
We have no more speakers.
Are there any attendees joining us remotely who have not spoken yet who'd like to speak? If so, please raise your hand at this time. Okay. Seeing no other hands raised, I will close the public hearing at this time and return to council. And going to recommend that we take, say, a five-minute break? Do you want? No, I appreciate that fact, that Councilmember Liliquist was just sharing that if we take a break now, many of the members of the public joining us right now will leave and not return after the break to hear the discussion or response following that. We can keep it at council. So I'll open it up for comments. Councilmember Liliquist?
Sorry, sorry to keep you here, but really, in my experience, often what happens is we lose dialogue at the moment when I think dialogue is called for. I would like to speak to several things that were said, but then bring it back to the council and what we might do next. Good news is I think most people, with very few exceptions, support cycling and endorse the idea of more and safer bike lanes. They understand that safety is important for everyone, so no one's against bike lanes, again, with very few exceptions, so let's start there, that's good. Now let's go places not so good. None of our streets were designed to accommodate bike lanes. All of our streets, if you put in bike facilities, will mean a compromise in some other use. The fact that we're having controversy isn't because we didn't think it out or didn't see it coming or didn't do it the right way, this is what comes with the territory. This is the pain that comes with change. I'm not saying we have to do this, but please realize there's going to be friction here, that's going to be part of the process. So let's lean into it and acknowledge it. Mr. Rikers, a cyclist who was hit by a door, everyone, please do the Dutch reach. Here's your car, here's a bike lane, don't do this. Dutch reach, use your other hand, you'll see the cyclist, saves lives. Some people have said that the city wants to define our Eldridge as an arterial. Those are the facts, it is an arterial. 7,000 vehicle trips a day connecting regions outside the city to destinations in the city, where the majority of all people traveling are not stopping on Eldridge, that's not their destination they're passing through, that's what state and federal law defines as an arterial, and we have adopted basically identical, not identical, but parallel definitions. We need to deal with the fact that it's an arterial, and deal with the fact that crossing arterial requires better crossings, and deal with the fact that on arterial, we do have issues with people speeding, and we do have to consider traffic calming, and deal with the fact that when we put bikes on an arterial, that's a design challenge. So rather than trying to pretend it's not an arterial, I think we need to acknowledge it's an arterial and treat that as a serious constraint in our planning and in our designs. Four of these projects are different from one. Four of the projects, and leave at least parking on one side, and the only dispute I've heard for four of those projects is, maybe we could shift it, in this case, south, or maybe we could shift it, in this case, north. So maybe there's some details to be worked out there, but I'm not hearing opposition to those. So because we've heard so much controversy, I don't think we're going to vote tonight, I don't think we ought to, we should move it to the committee of the whole to continue, but I would like us to very seriously consider moving those other four projects kind of into a separate category, to give some guidance for tweaking the design, but to acknowledge that these projects should probably go forward with less discussion than the other one, particularly because at least two of them are time-sensitive with regard to the funding we've received. I don't know how it's time-sensitive, hopefully two weeks is no big deal, but I would like to move those two kind of on a slightly separate track, because the Eldridge Avenue is different. It's different because all parking's being removed on both sides, so it's not a matter of shifting it. And it may seem wide now because it's so big and open, there's actually not much parking, but 36 feet ain't that wide, when you probably need a good 12 feet and 12 feet 24 for your travel lanes, then only six and six, and you can barely fit in parking, let alone a bike lane, you can't fit in both. So it's different in that way. It's also different in the sense that no one is coming in here really having the same emotional reactions to the concerns about crosswalk safety and speeding safety. Those are the issues that I know that residents of the area want to be addressed, and I think we ought to address them again, and that's different from the other two. So I'd like to bring it back and talk about those particular neighborhood concerns, and then fit the bike conversation into that context once we've established it. That's what I think we should do. And then finally, the staff, why are we putting the bike lane between the vehicle travel lane and the vehicle parking lane, again? Why are we making the bikes drive through an area where we know cars have to cross? It's kind of a rhetorical question. I don't like it, I don't like it, I'd like to flip them if we can, can we look at flipping them? And maybe there's good engineering reasons why it won't work in this case, but if you have pedestrians, then cyclists, then parked cars, then travel cars, the cars never have to cross over the bicycle lane. I'm hoping we can do that, we've done it once.
Thank you for acknowledging that, we have done it once, it has its challenges, but I appreciate the rhetorical statement.
Quick question of process, if I move this to be worked on during committee of the whole, does that stop the questions that we want to ask when it comes to us? Okay.
No, I would expect that.
So I would like to move that we move this to committee of the whole at an upcoming meeting, but I won't specify which until staff have an opportunity to say what would work best with scheduling.
It'll be our next meeting.
Motion was made by Councilmember Anderson and a second by Councilmember Hamel. So the motion is to move the discussion to committee of the whole, and per Director of Public Works, Eric Johnson, that would be at our next meeting, which is October 24th. Okay, and then open for discussion. Councilmember Williams?
Come on, turn on. Does that mean all, all four projects would move there, or just the one?
Want to clarify your motion?
I was moving everything, and then if we need to at that meeting, separate one to have further discussion, I think we could do it then.
So the current motion is to move all projects, this entire agenda bill to committee of the whole. Councilmember Anderson?
I do have a couple of questions. One, if we could be reminded what that deadline would be for the projects that have special funding, so we know that we can perhaps focus on those early in the meeting, and if there's something we can clear out separately, that would be great. I have a couple other things. The one speaker, and I'm sorry, Lisa, if I get your last name wrong, but Lisa Keller, who had spoken, West Illinois Street to relocate what's going to be, if we approve it this way, the remaining parking on the one side, could, when you come back, could you see if her concerns could be addressed with switching the side of parking, and if not, what the justification is why that wouldn't work? The other large concern was from Daniel, who had spoken about his business off of Gerard, the wheelchair ramp access. Can we take a look specifically to that? And if parking can't be switched in order to accommodate that, if Public Works could take a look and see what would be a remedy in order to make sure that wheelchair accessibility to that business will be available? And, can I keep going, or should I yield and do the big one? Okay, so I'm going to keep going. So I've spent a lot of time looking at Eldridge, and I changed the direction of how I go to work, so I would travel that road on my way to work in the morning and on my way home, so I can get a sense of how much traffic and how much it speeds, and I definitely, I had people pass me when I'm doing the 25 on both sides of my vehicle, which was startling, so I experienced that firsthand. I also went to park on some of the side streets and walk that area, and I do concur with the concern about some of the distance that people would have to park in order to get to some of those far away from the side streets, plus parking was difficult. In a couple situations, I was parking about a block back before I could walk up to Eldridge, so I can see the concern about the availability of parking. Looking at the design, which is a, when we look at the graph of what it is currently to what the suggestion is, it has a planting strip of three feet on one side and four feet on the other, then, so basically you have the vehicle at 11 feet, then you have the delineators for the protected bike lane, bike lane, then you have what looks like plantings, then the sidewalk, and then what would assume be people's yards. I would like to have, for the next meeting, for staff to look at or reimagine what would it look like to have parking on one side, and eliminate those seven feet worth of plantings. I think in the other examples where parking is being remained on one side of the street, we don't have that additional section of plantings, and those parking spots.
If I might, we are not proposing planting strips with landscaping on Eldridge Avenue. We are proposing a buffered bike lane, which would be two stripes along with a stanchion in the middle, similar to the picture that we showed on Cornwell Avenue. We are not proposing landscaping slash planting strips on Eldridge, just to be clear about that. We'd be happy to come back and talk about the, what it would look like for a bike lane on one side, but to be, if there was some miscommunication in the graphics, we are not proposing planting strips.
Okay, because in the graphic, it does show basically planting, you know, several feet, it shows the five-foot sidewalk, then it has three feet, and it looks like PLA, which I would assume was planting, then it has bike lane, then it has the delineator.
On the backside of the sidewalk, the existing landscaping, that's the existing back of the sidewalk.
So the other designs don't have that, that, what might be existing greenway.
They're due in many cases, but I just want to, we are not proposing new landscaping on Eldridge Avenue. So there are a couple places on Illinois, for example, where we're taking the existing width of the roadway, and there is landscaping behind the existing sidewalks on that section, we're not proposing to go wider than the existing width of the roadway. Even though there is existing right-of-way that's wider than the existing street, we are not proposing to widen the physical improvements.
Okay.
So we, as we tried to explain, we're working within the constraints of the existing footprint. We can come back and say, what would it look like to have a bike lane on one side, or a bike lane on two sides, and parking on one side, and what that would take physically to widen the road to accommodate that? We'd be happy to address that, but I just wanted to, we're not proposing additional landscaping behind the sidewalk or in between the existing curbs, it's using existing footprint.
I appreciate that clarification, I would like to see what it would look like in order to be able to have parking on one side. And then the last thing that I would like information on, we received some emails that stated that there was going to be major work along Eldridge with, I'm assuming, underground work, because there was comments about doing this work now, and then in a few years, having Public Works come back and do, I don't know if it's stormwater, what would be going through, and the concern was all this work, and then we're going to dig it up. If you could provide information on future plans, what will be happening there, and the timeline for that, so that we can take a look at whether or not it makes sense to do a consolidation of that work at the same time. And then lastly, if we should decide to do something along those lines, what type of traffic calming can we do in the short term if we are to not put in the buffered bike lanes immediately? Because the speed and safety should be our primary concern at this point, so I'd like to know what some alternative plans would be in the short term, more immediate, while we work out the details if it's not.
We'll be happy to answer those questions. I do want to say that that safety and speed is our, is our immediate concern, to be clear about that, that's not something we're, we're not placing bicycle lanes, it's a secondary component to safety. We are proposing that there will be at least, specifically to Eldridge Avenue, at least two protected crossings, two protected enhanced crossings on Eldridge, and possibly others. As identified in the six-year tip, there is at least two, and I think we've used that language on more than one occasion. But to be clear, we are not placing safety as a secondary consideration to implementation of the bike or pedestrian plan, that is a primary issue. The means that we achieve that will, will, are dependent on the policy decision the council makes on preserving or removing parking from that decision. There will be subsequent further engineering decisions about improvements within the roadway, but regardless of the decision about parking or no parking, we will still plan and proceed forward with at least two of the protected crossings on Eldridge Avenue.
Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, I've got two. The first one being what Councilmember Liliquist was mentioning about kind of reversing the order, I know it was thrown out as rhetorical, but I wasn't at the last meeting as to why that does or does not work, so I'm hoping that we can dive into that a little bit when this is brought back, because it makes total sense to me, and it just seems safer for the community at large. And then in our packet, there is an email from Director Lyon on page 99 with the right half, or not even the right half, the right margin is unreadable, and I think it has a lot of really important information in there. I'm wondering if we could get a fully readable version of that for the next time around.
Yes, so that email was attached to another person's email who commented on the proposal, and that was an email that Director Lyon sent to me, so we did not include his email to me in the original, in the context here, but I'd be happy to forward that to the entire city council. And Mr. Lyon is here, of course, and you can speak to that as well if he so desires.
I would be interested if, because it's not dated either, and it says specifically that you had only driven down Eldridge a couple times, which I completely understand, but you had a couple ideas at the bottom that are very interesting to me at least, and then I would love to know what Director Johnson and Mr. Schollhauser have to say if any of that would actually work.
Thank you, and good evening. Blake Lyon, Director of Planning and Community Development. That email was sent on May 6th, so in full disclosure, that was two months into my tenure with the city, I started on March 1st. And as a father of three young children, as somebody who has lived in various parts of this country, and as somebody who has embraced and geeked out on this profession quite a long time, I was simply just trying to offer some of my thoughts and perspectives on the issue, but more importantly, trying to understand the totality of the issues that we as a city, both community and staff are facing. So my comments were offered in large part just me trying to get up to speed, me trying to offer some expansive thought on the matter. I'll, we'll... I'll, we'll certainly include the email and its totality in your record for consideration, but I'll highlight just a couple pieces of that. One of which was offering a little bit of my context in terms of urban design experience. And one of those concepts that comes to place is this concept of enclosure. And the general thought process and the general rule is a one-to-one enclosure. And so when you're looking at the width of a, of a street or a particular public space, having that sense of enclosure really can help the intrinsic value of slowing those speeds. And so was offering some thoughts and comments about that. And that sense of enclosure can really come from a defined set of street trees, which don't exist on Eldridge. It can come from the scale and the placement of buildings, and given the fact that this is primary residential, you have additional front yard setbacks. So it didn't offer to create that enclosed space, and so we don't have the real inherent components that would create that by its existing condition. And so we're just offering some, some thoughts and considerations as to how to address the concerns that you've heard, many of which have been expressed tonight about the speeds and that, that overall sense. So I offer a few of my thoughts and comments, again, coming from a place of fresh new eyes looking at it and trying to offer some comments for consideration and/or critique. And then just thinking about, you know, looking at different alternatives and what that might be. So I've had the opportunity since that email was provided to walk the streets with a number of the community members, happen to reside in the Columbia neighborhood, and so I just continue to offer support, you know, as the city continues to wrestle with this and make an important decision. I'm happy to elaborate on specifics if you like, or I can certainly just provide the-
I, Joe, think we need to do that today with it running so long. When it's brought back at the next meeting, I would love to dive into it just a little bit further, and see if you think any of these ideas would work now that you have a better scope of the area. Thank you, Director Lyon.
Thank you.
In addition to that email that Councilmember Martins referenced, which I had made note of also, I think it's when emails are forwarded or attached to other correspondence, right? They end up, I mean, my glasses are thick anyway, so most of it, I spend extra time on, but some of it's very, very small to read. But in addition, the Engage Bellingham comments are cut off, so they end mid-sentence, so beginning on page 71. And they vary, the box sizes vary, but regardless of the box size, things seem to end mid-sentence for that section. Running through page 77, so 71 to 77, so just for the public record, if those could be included in their entirety when we revisit this on the 24th. Other comments, questions from council members at this time? One of my questions, I guess, in, as we move forward and we're talking about what specifically we would be approving, right? My understanding, before the council now, is the removal of parking. But I know that when Chancellor Schollhauser and Chris Como were beginning the presentation this evening, speaking to the fact that in the packet, those graphics are conceptual in nature, right, for sort of informational purposes at this time, my understanding is that the design, right, will take place at a future date. So one is about the engagement process with the public going forward. So is this sort of, is tonight the one opportunity to provide that comment? Or in those phases going forward, will there be additional opportunities for public engagement? And then secondly, I think about the, right, the Mill Road project, when we were talking about sidewalks on, right, and the neighbors saying, well, we only want sidewalks on one side, and we're saying, well, it's been done, and so we need to move forward with what's been designed for implementation, or sort of start over. With what's being proposed in some cases, right, with parking on one side or the other of a street, or all parking being removed, how restrictive is that in, that, I just want clarification about, do those decisions need to be made at the time of approval by council? And then we're bound by those parameters? Or are those pieces also subject to further discussion in the design aspect?
There's a lot to that question, if I might, but so, but let's start first with the question that we are asking the council as staff to, to make a decision on, which is to remove or not to remove on-street parking. The decisions that follow that are largely administrative in nature, and are left to our professional traffic, engineering staff to execute and carry out and implement the projects that are, have been identified through the public process in the Bike and Ped Plan, and are constrained by the standards that have been set by the city and approved by the city council in many cases under city code, or are constrained as to what and how we need to do things under state or federal law. Not to be trite, but the width of a sidewalk is the width of a sidewalk. It has to be at least a certain dimension, it can be wider than that, but it, there's not, that's not much of a choice, right? Once we decide to build a sidewalk, there's certain things we have to do. It has to be a certain width, it has to be a certain cross slope, it has to be a certain thickness to accommodate those types of things. So we tend to not have the design process, once the policy decisions have been made, be one of, of an iterative or quote, this is going to sound really terrible, but it's not a collaborative process. It is done by the professional engineers who the city has hired to execute the policies in the ways that we have been moving forward, based on the standards that are set by the city, some of which are administrative, and, but many of them are set by the council. There are also laws that we must follow. So the, the, the input on whether something is constructed or not is largely driven by the public process that comes through the six-year tip. That is the first key element of how that is done. That is typically follows at least two, a public hearing at the council, a formal required public hearing, followed by input from the Transportation Commission and their opportunity for public input, as well as their representation in the development of that six-year tip. And many, many times, projects appear on the six-year tip for multiple years before they go to construction. So there are, there are many opportunities to weigh in and say, yes, we're proceeding with a project, but these very specifics of the design that follow, again, are constrained by the laws and requirements and standards set by the city. In this particular case this year, we, we have proposals that require, or what the staff is asking for, feedback or direction, maybe direction is the best way to put that, on whether to remove or keep on-street parking. And from that decision, then we will make engineering decisions based on those codes and standards on how to implement or not implement a project as the case may be. So is there, is there a next step for a design charrette for public input on, on the sidewalks? Or where they go? Or the width, or the striping, or how that gets put together? And we, we have not done that in the past. We would not recommend that to be the case. There is a place for that, but on these types of projects, we don't recommend that that would be the place to do that. That's not to say we're not open to collaboration in public input, we are. But the approach on how we present these designs to the public is after decisions have been made by the council, following the standards set by the council. We have committed that we would do an open house type of event before we send projects out to bid in the spring, first quarter of 2023, on this grouping of five projects. We have not done that before. That came at the request of council, and we said we would do that, we would do that in spring of 2023. The approach we'll use for that is, is one that we refer to as the DOT approach, if I might. When the DOT does a project, they, and they will typically have an open house, they show up and say, this is what we're doing. We're not going to be that draconian. But our approach will be, here's the design that we're proposing, that can be constructed based on the design, the standards set by the city, the policies set by the city, the decisions made by the city council up to this point, here's what we will be building. Do you have questions or feedback on the specifics of that? And we will find that will, there'll be some very specific things that we will need to address. If there's a fundamental major policy question that needs to be addressed, then we would consider that and possibly return to council for a decision on that. But in most cases, I suspect that will not be the case. Here, the question on these five projects is, do we remove or keep parking on Eldridge Avenue? Do we remove or keep Eldridge, parking on both sides of Eldridge Avenue? Do we, do we not? So, so once that decision is made, then we will proceed forward and say, okay, we still need to address the speed and the types of collisions that we're seeing on Eldridge Avenue. How do we do that with the constraints that we have now that we're not proceeding forward with bicycles at this point in time, assuming we have a project that is constrained within the right-of-way, or the width of the existing road? If the council were to say, don't build bike lanes today, but come back with a future project and a future six-year tip, to do a full-blown reconstruction of that roadway, which we need to do, at some point, we do need to repair the paving, we need to replace the water mains, we need to replace the storm drain lines, we need to add additional street lighting on Eldridge Avenue. There are, but those are all below standards. This project is, is an interim step. It's a couple hundred thousand dollars, but in the grand scheme of things, compared to the 15 or 20 million dollars to rebuild that entire length of Eldridge Avenue, it seems like a relatively low cost to try something out. If we were to, on Illinois, choose not to move forward with removing of, of the, of the parking, does that mean we do not install the bike lanes? That's a question we want the council to give some direction on. If the council says, don't, don't, do not proceed today or this year, actually 2023, with removal of parking on Eldridge, on Cornwall, and constructing those bike lanes in 2023, that does not mean we could come back in '24, '25. So there's flexibility in the council's decisions that the council will make, but the designs will be left to, in my recommendation, is to the professional engineering staff that the city has that do their job exceptionally well, based within the guidance of policy and standards set by the city council. That's, that's a hard thing to say, and a hard thing to hear sometimes, but that's how we construct and build these engineering projects within the public rights of way.
Councilmember Anderson?
So, in so many ways, this is just a no-win situation on so many levels. And I can understand the public's frustration, one, on both sides, that we do have this planning process, we have the visioning of what the bike and pedestrian plan would look like. It's a lot of value statements of how we want our city to have mobility. Then with our six-year tip plan, it's like, these are the projects that we've identified by transportation that we really need to address. But it doesn't get down to the very specifics, so it's really easy to get behind as a community member that, yes, we need protected bike lanes, yes, we need good sidewalks, we need crosswalks. No one would say, we don't. But then when it's happening on your street, and it's in front of your house, and it's going to have these great impacts, or maybe it doesn't meet the need that you hope, like enough crosswalks, I have structural questions, like, how does sanitary service pick up, you know, the garbage? And I, I trust, when it was mentioned that it would go in the bike lane, it's probably where the delineators are, where it's closer for them to be able to do the grab. But it's difficult when we go through this process, and much like Mill Street, where people are attending meetings and they say, this is what we want, but based on how we have said, this is how the city will operate, we still go through and do those plans the way, basically, we have told Public Works this needs to happen, and we just don't have that ability to take a look at the, the case-by-case situation that might create some unique needs that the community members know are there. And then they don't have that voice to go into what the actual, you know, pun intended, rubber meets the road, whether it's a bike tire or a vehicle tire. And, and maybe it won't be this project, but maybe we need to start wrapping our heads around, maybe doing our process a little bit different on some of these major work projects, so that the community voice, who knows their neighborhood, knows how they maneuver around, what their safety needs might be, that they're going to be able to have a voice at, and insert at that time, why the crosswalk really should be here. Or this is why they need the parking. Eldridge is very unique. They don't, on the one side, they don't have alleys, they don't have sufficient driveways, and it's a long stretch. And so hearing the community voice through the design of what that would look like, I think is an important element, and I don't think we have the process to make that happen fully. Now, when we did the urban village for Seehome, we had a ton of visiting meetings, down to very specific elements of what we wanted, and the community voice really came in, and I think we have an exceptional product because of that community voice. And so I hope at some point, we might be able to insert where that, the people who are most impacted by this type of project has that ability to be heard and have some ability to influence some of the, the work that we'll be doing there.
I very much agree with that, and Samish is a great example. The, the, the many years of planning that came in, and the policies that resulted from that. And when that process was done, and the council, through, through a process, accepted that as policy with opposition, there was not, it was not uniform, there were some in favor and some opposed. And once that decision was made by the council in terms of the policy in developing the urban village, and the desire for how the street would be configured, then the engineers built that street, designed that roadway, the improvements that you currently see today, based on that policy set by the city council. There, there was not a secondary public input process on the engineering design that implemented the policy defined in the urban village plan set by the council. So I think it's a good example to point to. In this case, on Eldridge Avenue, we have the policy set by the council, identifying Eldridge Avenue to remove on-street parking with the approved plan in 2014. So the process that we are in now adds to that process, and engages the public community, asks the council, do you, as the council, want to proceed forward with this? And welcomes the input that we've received tonight from the many, many people who have strong opinions on both sides. To me, that's, it is the public process that we're engaging in. Once that decision is made, then we will proceed forward on the engineering side after the council has made a decision on that policy question. Our recommendation is that you make that as a policy question, that we not get into the engineering design at the, at the council level, that would be, take a lot of extra time, that would not be beneficial, in my opinion.
So one of the, when we talk about the policies or standards, when you're talking about the fact that a sidewalk, right, has its own dimensions and requirements that we're not going to be changing, I was wondering, in some of these conceptual drawings, right, some have protected bike lanes, but not all. And so is the, is the standard now to have protected bike lanes, or, or not?
Well, the, so Cordotta is a good example of where we were able to successfully put in the stanchions to separate out it, and we would call that a protected bike lane. One of the challenges with that is how do we run the street sweepers down that width of roadway? On Cordotta, we have very, it's wide enough that we can run a standard street sweeper down there without having to, to, it's wide enough to get the street sweeper down. We have, as Mr. Liliquist pointed out, we have on Forest, what's that street? On Forest, we have the bike lane protected by the parked cars. We find more often than not, the parked cars are blocking the bike lane. And our ability to run the street sweeper between the parked cars and the sidewalk is impaired because, as many signs as we put up, people park there illegally when we're supposed to be sweeping the street. So there are challenges on that. On Eldridge Avenue, given that we place a priority on safety for all users, which includes vehicles, pedestrians, and bicyclists, we are making the decision to, to recommend the approximately five-foot bike lane with a two-to-three-foot separated, stanchion separated, that is not wide enough for us to run a sweeper down. So we will be changing, will be offsetting the, the, the need to address that safety concern in one particular way, with the need to increase the maintenance that will now then be done by hand, as opposed to running a sweeper down there at night. So there's challenges associated with that. Is our, is our idealized standard to have a curb separated cycle tracks? Absolutely. It's, we, we've, many of us have had opportunity to see those in other cities, other communities, other countries, they would be the gold standard. Where we're not able to do that, trying to work within the existing footprint, within the funding constraints that we have, trying to minimize, minimize that effort and maximize the development of our network, there are trade-offs that we have to make on a frequent basis, which is the engineering side of the question. When the engineers meet with, frequently with our staff in the planning department and our staff in the maintenance side of things, is how do we balance all of those interests at the same time, and do it in a way that's responsible and affordable, pragmatic, and moves our goals forward to build that network as the council has directed us to do? So is that a preferred standard? All things equal, we would prefer to do that in all cases. We did that on Chestnut Avenue as an example, we did not do it the entire length, but we did provide some curb, physical concrete curbing with the stanchions on that, where we were able to do that. But it's, it's a constant challenge of which things do we do and whether we do them, trying to fit things to existing footprints.
Any other questions or discussion? I certainly appreciate, I mean, obviously, all of the comments shared this evening in person, as well as with our remote attendees, yeah, when it impacts you personally in your day-to-day life, that's, that's important. And the struggle as a, a council member, I think, is balancing, right, those individual interests against the, right, the broader community interest, but they should still be taken into account. But sometimes what I struggle with is matching up, I mean, I've heard repeatedly that speeds are of concern, which- are of concern, which I agree, throughout the city, we have, hear about concerns about speed, so unfortunately, I feel like that's, yeah, that's a broad issue to be addressed right now, and certainly, the focus on traffic calming, you know, in hopefully every project throughout the city is, is important for that reason. But sometimes, things feel juxtaposed when you hear community members talk about, you know, how will delivery trucks stop where the SSC pick up, and then also concern about speed, and if that truck, right, is there with their flashers on temporarily, inevitably, that should slow down traffic, because now there's an obstacle in the road that's going to, to slow the traffic. And so, there's always going to be some, some give and, and take, and unfortunately, there are never perfect solutions. But I look forward to the, I know that we have a motion before us to bring this item back again at the next meeting. Oh, one of the things, just because it was in the drawings, and it's an area that I frequently use, on page 37, where Sunset comes into Illinois, West Illinois, and now you can no longer go left at that light, you can only go right, right, because we changed Illinois to only allow bikes to be going in at that time. But so there's still two lanes at that light, now both turning right.
We, that, that, that concept sketch is not what we're currently planning at that, we've got a more substantial intersection improvement at that, as we've moved through the design, that we'd be happy to share on the 24th, that-
I just want to make sure that-
Yeah, it's-
-change was coming, because every time I'm at that intersection, and both, there's cars in both lanes, both turning, I'm like, we're turning into one lane, and I don't know how we're going to come out on the other side.
That intersection has evolved over many years-
I figured it was on your radar, I just had to say-
We have, we have, we have a hopeful solution that we think will be much more beneficial than its current arrangement.
Perfect. So we have a motion before us, it was made by Councilmember Anderson, and seconded by Councilmember Hamel, to bring this discussion back to the committee of the whole on October 24th. There's no further discussion, I'll call the question. All those in favor will say aye.
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 Any opposed, or abstentions? Okay, seeing none, that passes 7-0. Anything further from staff at this time?
Thank you for the input, and thank you for all the members of our community who came and commented both for and against, and I think that's one of the great things in public process, we get to hear all those opinions, and it's glad, I'm glad to be here in person to do this tonight, so thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much. So at this time, we will take a brief recess, we'll stay five minutes. Members of public, you're welcome to stay and hear the report out from the day meetings, or you can go on with your evening, but thank you for joining us. We'll reconvene in five minutes. It's 10 o'clock, so we're going to get started. If everyone can have a seat, we're going to get started. This is what this is for. Yes. Finally figured out what the gavel's for. Okay.
The gavel.
All right, so welcome back to the regular Bellingham City Council meeting for Monday, October 3rd. We have just concluded the third public hearing, which brings us to the mayor's report. And so for that, I'm going to turn to Mayor Seth Fleetwood.
Okay, thank you. Goodness. Long first day back. The meeting just begins, bless you. I'm going to abbreviate my remarks tonight, just because of the hour. I'm sure you all appreciate that. So first off, I've got an appointment, Betty Sanchez, to the Transportation Commission, that does require approval.
Second. Motion's been made by Councilmember Hamel, and a second by Councilmember Huffman. Any discussion? Councilmember Liliquis.
Ms. Sanchez looks wonderful, I'm voting yes, but I'd just like to know, you need to keep an eye on, on like, who's on the Transportation Commission, that all, like, get a good variety of voices. If you can't answer now, it'd be nice to know in the future. What is the current makeup? Do we think that we have good breadth and diversity, and I'm sure Ms. Sanchez adds to that? Just who's on the TC?
I know that we do have good breadth and diversity, I'd be happy to bring back a list, but I couldn't recite off the top of my head at the moment. Thanks for that. An announcement-
So, in a moment, we're going to vote on them.
Oh, go for it. Thank you, sorry.
Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, or abstentions? Seeing none, that passes 7-0. Back to you.
Uh, just an announcement, Indigenous Peoples' Day, also Coast Salish Day, of course, next, next Monday, October 10th, is Indigenous Peoples' Day, also recognized by the City of Bellingham as Coast Salish Day. A group of organizations is hosting a celebration that day, featuring a screening of the award-winning documentary, Daughter of a Lost Bird, plus question and answer with the director and the producer, it's free of charge, all are welcome, and a traditional Coast Salish dinner will follow, and be provided. That's October 10th, 2022, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m., it's going to be in the Cyrie Auditorium at Wacom Community College. Organizing partners include Western Washington University, Northwest Indian College, Children of the Setting-Sun Production, the Swinimish Indian Tribal Community, Peace Health, Bellingham Schools, Gadget Valley College, Bellingham Technical College, Wacom Community College, and the City of Bellingham. You can go to the Western Washington University's website and find more details as it relates to that. I did want to invite Bellingham Police Chief Rebecca Merzig to come up for a moment. There was an incident that Council President Stone made reference to do today, under old and new business, relating to an incident that occurred two days ago. Quick actions and calm demeanor displayed by one of our officers during an incident on Saturday afternoon, displayed with great clarity, the extensive training and skills of our Bellingham Police Department, and could you just offer a little overview of what transpired that day, and your thoughts?
Sure. Rebecca Merzig, you're chief of police. So we had an incident on Saturday afternoon where a gentleman, having a mental health crisis, wanted to do a suicide by cop, that is, where someone wants to intentionally provoke a lethal force encounter. He requested that somebody meet him at the station to do that, so that information went out. He located, and I've got permission to use her name, but Officer Kat Dearborn, on a collision off of Lakeway, and while she was dealing with that collision, struck her vehicle with his vehicle on her driver's side door, exited the vehicle, slashed her tire with a knife, and then, with the knife in hand, tried to get her to use lethal force on him. Thankfully, he chose to comply, and she used incredible poise and de-escalation skills and training to get that compliance. So I'm incredibly grateful in front of you today to, number one, not be dealing with a line-of-duty death, which is the worst day for a police chief, and also not to be dealing with an officer-involved shooting, which, when it's suicide by cop, is the worst day for a police officer. So I'm just incredibly grateful and proud of Officer Dearborn.
Thank you, chief. Back to you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So we will move to report outs, and again, today, we were asking for much grace and patience with everyone involved as we navigate our hybrid meetings and the technology. Before turning it over, I just wanted to briefly, yeah, give appreciation as well to our BTV team and IT support for getting us here to the hybrid meeting. And we ran some troubleshooting during the break between afternoon and evening, so I'm hopeful now, as I turn it over to Councilmember Huffman, for a report out from the Community and Economic Development Committee, that mics are all a-go, so, turning it over to you.
Thank you, President Stone, and thank you, Ben, on staff. I know that you worked hard to make sure that I didn't feed back anymore, and it sounds like it's working beautifully. So, we had two agenda items on committee today. First was Agenda Bill 23467, was an update on Garden View Tiny House Village. Garden View Village is the first city-funded tiny house village in the community, offering onsite case management and 24/7 staffing. It is operated as a partnership between the Low-Income Housing Institute, Lehigh, and local partner Road to Home. Garden View welcomed its first guests in October of 2021, and has been operating continuously for the past year, serving medically fragile and senior couples and individuals who are experiencing homelessness. Garden View operators will report out on this, they did report out on the success and lessons learned over the first year of operation. It was a wonderful conversation, there was a lot of, a lot of questions from council and, and discussion that, in the first year, it's, it's been quite successful, and they, they talked about some of the limitations, some of the challenges, which, no surprise, just available housing to move people into has, has been quite a challenge. So, and there, that was for information and discussion only. Next, we had Agenda Bill 23468, that was the 2022-23 severe weather shelter plan. In preparation for the winter months, city staff have been working closely with the Wacom County Health Department, and have engaged the services of Road to Home to manage and operate the severe weather day center use center, severe weather day use center, and an overnight severe weather shelter, which will be activated in case of a severe weather event. And so this year, planning ahead, the, the Health Department and County and City have partnered to prepare for, for severe weather sheltering, which triggers at 28 degrees, and for more information, and there's also a lot of conversation about current sheltering, current transitional housing during that discussion as well, so both of those, and that was also for information and discussion only, both of those conversations can be found at meetings.cub.org as well, if you are interested in more information. And with that, end of committee report.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Huffman. So next this afternoon, we had Committee of the Whole, we had a number of items before us this afternoon, the first of which was Agenda Bill 23469. This is an ordinance amending the 2021-2022 biennial budget, increasing revenues and expenditures for the tourism promotion area. So the city and county councils formed a tourism promotion area as authorized by RCW 35.101.020, after receiving a petition from affected businesses. Collections received from qualified businesses in the city and unincorporated Wacom County are deposited with the City of Bellingham. Pursuant to the ordinance, the city will contract with Bellingham-Wacom Community Tourism to conduct the activities consistent with state law. The Bellingham-Wacom County Tourism Board of Directors prepared a draft budget, and the city council acted on that budget as part of its role as the legislative authority at its September 26th, 2022 meeting. And then, this afternoon, there was a unanimous vote to move forward approval of the ordinance with those increased revenues and expenditures as presented in the packet, an ISO move. Motion's been made by the chair, and a second by Councilmember Williams. Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Okay. You are correct. Correct. I stand corrected. So the afternoon, that vote would mirror the vote this evening, which is 6-0-1, with Councilmember Hamill recused. Thank you for that. And I believe Deputy Clerk Kelly Getz probably has the notes from this afternoon, so I'll follow up with you to make sure that I reported that correctly this afternoon as well. The next item before us earlier this afternoon was Agenda Bill 23470. This was a preview of county ordinance creating Watcom Racial Equity Commission. So in partnership with the Chuckanut Health Foundation, the City of Bellingham and Watcom County have funded and participated in a community-led process to create recommendations for a county-wide racial equity commission. A proposed Watcom County ordinance to create the Watcom Racial Equity Commission was introduced to the Watcom County Council on September 27, 2022. The proposed county ordinance anticipates city commitment to the purpose and goals of the WREC as well as joint funding to support its work. And so this afternoon, there was discussion of the proposed ordinance as presented in the packet, and the motion before us was to direct the administration to bring forward an inter-local agreement to jointly fund and support the Watcom Racial Equity Commission upon passage of the county ordinance, an iso move. Motion's been made by the Chair and a second by Councilmember Hamill. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question, all in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Okay, seeing none, that passes 7-0. So, and in connection with that report out, so on October 11th, it will return to the county council for final consideration, but just wanting to make sure to highlight as well the work of our own Councilmember Christina Michelle Martins, as well as Suling Zhao and Heather Flaherty, and just the extreme appreciation for the commitment to this work and bringing this forward and getting it to the point that it's at today. So look forward to the work ahead. Thank you very much. The next item before us this afternoon was Agenda Bill 23439. This was a work session to consider proposed amendments to the Bellingham Municipal Code to establish a manufactured home park overlay and regulations related to the change of use, ownership, and closure of a mobile home park. So on September 12, 2022, the city council held a public hearing to consider amendments to the Bellingham Municipal Code to establish a mobile home park overlay to preserve existing mobile home parks through additional zoning protections and regulations related to the change of use, ownership, and closure of a mobile home park. At the end of the hearing, city council held the record open for further written comment until 10:00 a.m. on September 21st. Council further directed staff to bring the proposed, the proposal to the City Council Committee of the Whole for a work session and to provide information on the initial questions asked by council. And so this afternoon, there was robust discussion following a detailed presentation from, from staff. And at the end of that discussion, which members of the public can go back and watch in the recordings from this afternoon, there was a motion to bring this item back for further discussion at our next meeting, which will be October 24th, an iso move. Second. Motion's been made by the Chair and a second by Councilmember Martins. Any discussion? Okay. Seeing none, all in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Okay, seeing none, that passes 7-0. The next item before us this afternoon was Agenda Bill 23471. This is introduction of the proposed 2023-2024 biennial budget. So the mayor and staff presented an overview of the proposed 2023-2024 biennial budget, and the full budget document can be found at cob.org/budget. So again, that presentation is available for members of the community to watch in that recording, but Mayor Pletwood was highlighting the focus of the budget this year, first being the focus on public safety, as well as creation of a climate office, major investments in libraries and parks, as well as continued emphasis on diversity, equity, and inclusion. And finally, citywide infrastructure improvements and an affordable solution to post-point. And just wanting to highlight the fact that today's discussion or presentation was really a high-level overview of the budget, and then going over, in the next five weeks, on Mondays, we will have detailed reports from different departments. And so at our next meeting on October 10, 2022, we will hear from Fire and Library. And again, the detailed listing of which reports will be coming forward on which date was included under announcements in upcoming meetings earlier this evening. I was thinking that was this afternoon, but no, that was just a couple hours ago, so you can go back to the beginning of the meeting for that detail. So those discussions will continue at our next meeting, again, hearing from Fire and Library. So then, we have Agenda Bill 23391. This is approval of city council meeting minutes, so this is the regular meeting minutes from September 26, 2022 for consideration. Second. Motion's been made by Councilmember Hamill and a second by Councilmember Huffman. Any discussion or changes? Okay, seeing none, all in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Okay, seeing none, that passes 7-0. Next, we have Old and New Business. The new businesses, we're here in chambers, our first day back after a couple of years, so we're going to chalk it up for success, having made it through the day. Mr. Heinrich?
Brad Heinrich, Mayor's Office. I just wanted to follow up with Councilmember Lillquist's comment about the alternative response potential for a grant that's through Association of Washington Cities. They received a $1.9 million allocation to fund cities who are pursuing alternative response teams. It's a fairly straightforward application. I would have to do a little bit of work with our partners across the street, but it's probably worthwhile pursuing that, so it's been on our radar, and I believe that application is due in the next couple of weeks, so it's probably something we will pursue. Thank you.
Other items from Old and New Business? Or updates? No? Okay. If not, there were no executive session items this afternoon, so we move forward to consent agenda.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilmember Hamill and a second by Councilmember Lillquist. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Okay, seeing none, that passes 7-0. Any further business before the council this evening? Okay, seeing none, just want to announce again that our next meeting will be Monday, October 24, 2022. That will be our next day full of regular council meetings, but we will have a budget work session this coming Monday, October 10, again, with reports from Fire and Library. So if there's nothing further, we are adjourned. Thank you very much, have a good night.